Welcome to February 4th, 2025 meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers if you need to fill one out. So if you have something to say, we ask that you fill out the speaker request form, bring it to us, and we'll go from there. So we have a roll call and determination. Who would do the roll call?
Mr. President.
Dur.
Here.
Drews.
Here.
Haddock.
Here.
Ross Connect.
Here.
Wyffenbach.
Here. I will lead us in a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance. Everybody please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Except for Jerry. Okay, we have a review and approve the agenda. So has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Haddock and a second by Dur to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. So we're going to move to the consent calendar, just a quick little synopsis here. I've been used to not reading it in, so it just makes it go a little bit quicker. So if anybody has anything that they want to remove from the consent counter calendar, whether in the audience or whether you're in the commission, we'll start with the audience. If they have anything they want to remove from the consent calendar, now is the time to do that. So seeing none, we'll move to the commission. Does the commission have any items that they would like to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, okay. I would entertain a motion on.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion from Mr. Ross Connect and a second from Commissioner Haddock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion will carry. And so now we'll move to the regular agenda items, which is number seven. First read of ordinance number 795, Deputy State's Attorney Alexa Muller, an ordinance establishing requirements for alcohol beverage licensing and sales in Pennington County. Alexa?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Alexa Muller, Deputy State's Attorney with the Pennington County State's Attorney's Office. In your packet, you do have a memorandum written by me that kind of explains the changes that occurred with the ordinance. This hadn't been updated since 2012. It is now 2025. We felt that it was well past due to update our ordinance, especially because, excuse me, there were a number of laws that were updated in 2018 that we needed to have added to our new ordinance. So at this point, I would ask that you approve the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item? No, seeing none. From the commission, Commissioner Dur.
Yeah.
Alexa, I believe he has a question for you.
Yeah, if you could just point out what those changes were.
Thank you, Commissioner Dur. There are a number of them. There was a pretty massive overhaul in chapter 35-2 and 35-4. So the major changes in our ordinance are how we issue licenses and how the number of licenses in the county is calculated. If you compare the old ordinance that we are completely repealing and contrast it with the new ordinance, you'll kind of see those number of changes. There's just quite a few of them to go over, but all pursuant to statute.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
So Section 4A, pursuant to the authority of South Dakota Code of federal law 35-4-103, there will be an imposed additional fee of $50 per video lottery machine. You know, if we know what each one of those machines generate, does that $50 seem the right fee for a lottery machine?
Commissioner Ross Connect, I would defer to Auditor Cindy Muller. I believe that's a discussion that we had, and I believe it's pursuant to statute, but I would defer to her expertise.
Thank you. Cindy Muller, are you prepared to answer that?
I am not.
You're not?
I am not.
Okay, if you want to punt and we can get back.
I don't believe that there is, I'm not sure as she said, whether that $50 is actually in statute, or if that is just what has been in place for as long as I can remember as far as those.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Well, to me, that just seems that it's a little bit low. And I wonder, you know, if we've revised this, if that's what it was before we did a revision on this. And my other question would be, since this revision, have there been any additional licenses available in the county?
I'm not sure. Alexa, would you be able to answer that question?
I can answer the first one, Commissioner Ross Connect. I just pulled up the statute. The fee pursuant to that statute may not exceed $50, so that is pursuant to the updated law.
Okay.
As to the second, I do not know the answer to that question.
No, I do not believe there are.
Okay. This is Mr. Ross, Commissioner Ross Connect, does that satisfy your thought?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Haddock, did you have a question?
Nope, I was just going to table until they found the answers, but it's okay.
Yep, if we're all happy, we're just abiding by the state law.
Yeah, I'm going to say, yeah, it's just the first reading, so we can make changes as we go along.
Sure. I think if there's a possibility that we could just figure out if we do have for sure any other licenses available, that would be nice to know. But if we don't, that, either way, if we just could get that answer, maybe the next meeting or just send us an email or something, so, thank you. I think we're, okay, do we get a motion on this item?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 795, an ordinance establishing requirements for alcohol alcoholic beverages licensing and the sales in Pennington County, and to schedule a second reading on February the 18th, 2025.
Sorry. We've got a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect and a second from Mr. Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes, and we go to item number eight, and since Cindy's already here, item from an auditor, correction of legal description to the resolution of annexation to Countryside South Road District.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. When this was first presented, the memo that we presented had included lot one and two, and the resolution that was presented by the Road District Countryside South was only for lot one, so we would ask for that correction.
That's a summary of what we have. Does any have any questions from the audience, from the, from the public? Hearing no questions, how about the commission? Any questions from the commission? This just looks like a simple, okay, so we get a motion?
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
Move to correct the legal description for the acknowledgement of the resolution for a minor boundary change to Countryside South Road District. The legal description should be read lot one, block one, Buener subdivision located in section 32, TINR 7E, BHM, Pennington County, South Dakota.
We've got a motion.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Haddock and a second from Ross Connect, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes, okay. This item says 915, so we're a little bit early, so can we skip over you till 915? That'll work for you.
Just table it, if that's okay.
Well, if we table it, that means we can't come back to it, right?
No, we just.
Then you just bring it off the table. Go ahead, Mr. Dur.
I'm just going to say, we can just go to the next item and then come back.
Let's just deal with it at 915, okay. We'll go to the next item, number nine, items from Fire Administration, Fire Coordinator Val Newman, Range Fire Suppression Assistance Resolution. Hello, Val.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You're ready to roll, so.
I am ready to roll, sir.
All right, let's hear it.
So today we bring before you our resolution that is required by South Dakota state statute to authorize us to request help from the state on fires that are in county jurisdiction. We have used this a couple of times during Administrator Harvey's tenure, during the Hawk Draw fire in Wasta, and then during the Duhamel Flats fire, and both of these times, the fire was stopped and prevented a real disaster from happening. Commissioner Dur would have the largest area that, under county jurisdiction, that would cause a need for this authorization. The request is used for equipment and resources that are not in our normal suppression inventory, such as hand crews, aircraft, dozers, or other specialized equipment. The state can provide us with two trucks and six people at no cost to the county, and that's their normal resources that they provide us at no cost, and that is under South Dakota cultivate law. The list of senior county leadership personnel that is listed on this resolution have all been approached and given permission to be included within the resolution, and that's if Administrator Harvey, our Fire Service Board Chair, or our Vice Chair are not available, others can step in to request the resources if they are needed with the suppression efforts for fires. The senior leadership within the county can easily verify that there is a problem, what the problem is, and are familiar with those who would be requesting those resources. The costs are covered within the fire budget or the contingency budgets, and this is required by state statute. Once signed, we will pass that along to South Dakota Wildland Fire, and they request this resolution to be updated and signed each time there's a change within the commission or within our Fire Service Board. So obviously, there's a change within the commission, so we need to sign and update this. Our Fire Service Board Chair, Dave Lindman, and Jay Wickham, who is the Director of South Dakota Wildland Fire, is here with us today. If you have any further questions that I haven't already addressed.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from the audience, from the public? No? How about the commission? I think there might be some questions up here.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
Val, will you explain who the county designees are?
So that would be anybody actually on the commission, and I just had this conversation with Director Wickham. So you guys are authorized to sign, to spend funds for the county, so that would be all of you. We have listed specifically our chair and our fire liaison, our alternate fire liaison, and then Administrator Harvey, and our Fire Service Board Chair, and our Vice Chair, who is Eric Chase, and he's with the Whispering Pines Fire Department. And then the others that are listed on here would be our Emergency Management Director and Deputy Director, Willett and White, and then with the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Mueller, Deputy Sheriff, Chief Deputy, excuse me, Mark Hughes, and Willie Welchel, and then with ESCC Kevin Carley and his Deputy Director, Stephanie Olson.
And Mr. Chair, are we on eight B?
I'm sorry?
Nine A.
Nine A.
Okay.
We're coming back to eight B.
Okay.
At 915, it was scheduled for 915, so we'll be back to that one.
No, excuse me.
This is the wildfire persecution. I know you've spent a lot of time dealing with some of the stuff up in your area, so I don't know if you had any comments you wanted to make, or, no? You're good? Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the Range Fire Suppression Assistance Resolution authorizing those designated persons to request range fire suppression assistance from South Dakota Wildland Fire Coordinator and Wildland Fire Division.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Commissioner Dur and a second from Commissioner Haddock. Any comments on that motion? I mean, if all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. We still have a couple minutes, so I'm going to move on to item 10. So this is items from the Sheriff, Brian Mueller, scheduling of meetings for the jail expansion project. Go ahead, Mr. Mueller, Sheriff Mueller.
Good morning, Commission. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. And I know I wrote the letter to talk about scheduling the meetings, but I think it might be appropriate to ask the commission if they would be willing to set up two commissioners on a jail committee to work with us and the rest of the commission on scheduling these meetings, and as a liaison back to the full board to keep you updated on meetings that we're working on scheduling, and, you know, what that strategy needs to look like. So I guess I would ask that, that commission consider placing two commissioners on a jail committee to work with Davis Purcell and I on scheduling these meetings. And I've been working pretty closely with Commissioner Dur and his role on the building committee. I would request that he be one of the two commissioners, and if you wanted to pick somebody to join him. And I think there'll be opportunities for all the commissioners that want to get involved as much as any of you want to get involved in those community meetings. There'll be, you know, plenty of work for all of us to do once we get those scheduled, but this would just be to work on scheduling that and being a liaison to the full board.
Thank you, Sheriff Mueller. Is there any comments from the audience, from the commission? I think that.
I would just like to say that, yeah, I would like to be involved in that. It's kind of a, you know, we had the jail tour, you know, a week or so ago, and, yeah, it goes back to the days, my days as a deputy sheriff, working and going through that building project, and so, anyway, it's something I have interest in, so I'd like to be on that committee.
So we got one person to put on that. So we need to give you some direction at some point to schedule some, you'll just need to give us a little bit of time, Brian, and we will, we will get two members for you, and we'll schedule some meetings, and we will get back to you on that, so. I guess the motion would be to move, direct the sheriffs to schedule public meetings to increase community awareness and engagement concerning the proposed jail expansion. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about this, I think it's important, so we're moving forward, that this jail expansion is important, there's a lot of infrastructure issues that we all know of, and then just ask that the commission think in their, in their mindset if they want to be on this particular committee with Commissioner Dur. So if I can get a motion, we can move forward.
All right. So it looks like we have a couple of motions here. First motion, move to direct the sheriff to set up a meeting with Fall River County, Custer County, and the city of Rapid City for potential partnerships opportunities regarding the jail expansion project.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
My only comment on.
Hold on, we got a motion from Dur and a second from Haddock, but listen, and then Mr. Ross Connect, you can speak on that motion.
Yeah, the only comment I was going to make, that we could actually expand that list of folks that we think that could be part of the partnership. I know we named some specifics here, but there might be some other ones that will get included in the future.
So we just, can we maybe just amend that motion to say that if whatever comes necessary, that he can make that conversation on our behalf or in his behalf?
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
So we get that amendment, that we'll, we're going to make the amendment with.
I'll change my original motion to go back and just change that and say, motion to direct the sheriff to set up meetings with potential partnership opportunities regarding the jail expansion project.
Thank you.
My second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Dur and a second from Haddock. Any comments on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mueller, and we got another motion to deal with here, so.
Yeah, we've got a second motion here, Mr. Chairman. Second motion would be move to direct the sheriff to schedule public meetings to increase community awareness and engagement concerning the proposed jail expansion project.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller, and thank you. We'll go on to, we can go back to item number eight B now that we've passed the 915. So, and this item is dealing with Auditor Muller, and it's a budget supplement resolution, SP 25002. So be free to go.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we're asking for a budget supplement for human services from their restricted fund balance. They received, well, I believe his memo was attached, an award of $2,500, and, and Health and Human Services Director is very frugal and did not spend that all last year, so we'd like the authority to spend the remaining amount of $568.30.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
Motion to move the supplement, the 2025 Human Services Budget from Restricted Fund Balance in the amount of 568.30 for the purchase of items for the employees' wellness and client needs.
Second.
We got a motion from Haddock and a second from Dur?
Drews.
Oh, I'm sorry, from Drew. Oh, my left ear is a little weak, sorry about that. Okay, so we got a second from Drew, and any comments on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
We need to separate you two.
Hearing none, motion carries. Just a little bit of tidbit, Joan asked me earlier, when we, when we set this up, if I should, if she should change you guys because of that, so, but it's fine, I'll get, I'll get better at it, so. We'll move on to item number 11, items from Buildings and Grounds, Director Davis Purcell, contingency spending recap and approval request, 900 concourse remodel. So Director Davis, you're free to go.
All right. Good morning.
You might, you might want to take that literally.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hopefully, we will, we'll keep it reined in and let you finish.
I hope so. We'll see how this goes. So I tried to set up, well, again, Davis Purcell, Buildings and Grounds Director, I tried to set this memo up to show you what we've spent in contingency, or what we had approved in contingency, what we've spent, and what we're looking to get approved today, and then I'll also explain the motion behind it a little bit. But there's a lot happening out of the concourse remodel right now. I believe every commissioner has been out there recently. So our initial contingency amount was 3% of the project total, which was about $194,000, $195,000. The reason we did that is we wanted to obviously be budget conscious and conservative. Looking back, though, on a typical remodel project, when you're going in and you're gutting a facility, or you're renovating an existing facility, there's always a lot of unknowns that go along with that. Typically, it's between the 8% to 10% contingency amount, so I'm going to kind of go through what we've done so far, and the reason I'm pulling it up on the screen is just for anyone for the public or the commission to better understand how I laid this out. So the, what we've spent the $194,000 on so far is we had change order two, which is some, just some recessed floor boxes, slab cutting, and some civil modifications. We had to add like a concrete apron to our second approach, so that's what some of these civil modifications are, oops, excuse me. And then change order three, we had some adjustment to wall types. The fire suppression system here was the big one. It was not sized appropriately, at least on, one third of the building was renovated at one point before we purchased it, and that, they upgraded that to get up to the fire code. And then when we got, you know, when we bought the building and now we're renovating the entire building, the other two thirds of that fire suppression system had to be updated. We also had some landscaping additions, which were due to city review. There was not enough landscaping points out there, so we had to add quite a few trees and shrubs that we, we will in the springtime here. And then the smoke detection revision here, this actually gave us a credit, which is calculated into this. I didn't want to, I didn't want to put prices on each one of these items, so. Anyways, we had some additional landscaping design services, obviously, to account for all the additional landscaping that we had to do. And then we had change order five, which was some north parking lot drainage and catch basin. A lot of the north lot sediment was washing into our property, and we own the lot north of concourse as well, so that was a fairly large change order there. So out of that $194,000, you can see the remaining contingency of 7,200. If you look up here, change order four, this was not necessarily deducted from our contingency spending, we got commission approval for this. It was $144,000, and this was for a significant amount of additional carpet to be replaced. And this is still, with us being frugal of trying to maintain some of the flooring that is there and replacing as needed, but in a lot of those spaces at concourse, they were set up with cubicles, there was over 500 cubicles in that building, and a lot of them didn't have chair mats, so a lot of those chairs just would make wear patterns where those people sat, so we had to replace a lot more carpet. Okay. So now I'm going to go to, these are the outstanding, this is, all of these PRs that you see here labeled, you know, one through six, this is all for change order six. So PR 10, we have some wall covering, removal and repairs, wall repairs, and additional paint. So long story short, what happened here is, when we were going throughout the demo, we realized there was a lot of wallpaper, vinyl, that was textured and painted over, that we did not know, we thought it was sheet rock. And so once you get into that, and you start tearing stuff apart, you start adding walls, you start putting doors into those spaces, the vinyl wall covering gets damaged, and we had to remove it. So then we'd have to skimcoat it, texture it, and paint it. We also had a lot of areas where we had new walls that met up with that vinyl, to where we had to make sure that transition looked okay, and then what ended up happening is we had to texture and paint the entire wall that the new wall met up against. So we were very frugal here to keep as much wallpaper or existing vinyl there and just texture and paint over it, it's in good condition, but there was also some spots where it was bubbling out and ripping off, so we had to replace it. PR 12, these are some IT needs, we had to provide a ladder rack and a cable tray to support, some service loops, those are your CAT 5, your CAT 6 cables that run into each office for your, for your, for your network, for your computer, and then they have to re terminate tests and relabel some of those remaining cables, and then pull, pull some new cables where it's required. PR 13, just some door hardware modifications to make sure all the locks match up with each other, so it's consistent throughout the building. PR 16, this is, we had to put a new sanitary service or sewer line, essentially, when we built the B&amp;G shop behind the building, we had to run a sanitary sewer line to the main connection that ran out to the street, and when they ran it over there, their elevations were off, and our, the sanitary sewer line, the existing one did not line up with the, with the new added line, so we actually had to drop that line down and put a new sanitary sewer line in. PR 17 is just minor added electrical for the audio visual systems that will be out at concourse. PR 18, this is a large one, this one, we're adding ballistic resistant material to the face of the dais, and just, let me touch on that real quick. Essentially, they're called para-aramid kevlar wall panels, and it looks like, I believe they're going to be, it's called the National Institute of Justice Ballistic Standards, which rates the, sort of the rounds that it could stop, and we're putting two quarter inch panels on there, and I believe from what I'm reading here, it'll stop everything up to a 308. So those alone were roughly $65,000, but again, we know some of those security concerns that we heard from the commission, and so we, we looked at, we're looking, adding those on the dais. We're also adding two swing gates at the dais to not allow, you know, public to just walk right up there, and then also, we're adding three walled offices in the Planning and Zoning Department. That was a request that they had actually made early on in the project that I was not aware of, and so we're adding those offices now. So the total for outstanding PRs, or this change order is 260,649. I'm going to come back to my motion here in a second, if I could explain this table. So this breaks everything down, we had the initial contingency up here in the green line, and then I, what I should have done is actually took CO4, change order four, and brought it down out of here, but this, this, because it was approved by the commission, it's not necessarily, I didn't, I didn't add it, I didn't deduct it from the initial contingency. So what you're seeing here is sort of a table of what I explained above, and then down here, these are all the requests that I'm asking get approved today. So if you total the initial contingency, change order four, because it's still part of what we're doing here, and then these are all the total outstanding PRs, you come to 592,551 dollars. So I'll go back to my motion, which is what I'm requesting is a 10% contingency spending authority out of concourse, so hopefully that makes sense now, now that I'm circling back to that. It allows me, I still have about $58,000, $60,000, somewhere in there for some, some minor things that may come up. We do actually have some more PRs that are in the works. I'm trying to limit this as much as I can, this is more that I want to see in a, in a remodel project, but again, there's also some items that were, that probably should have been part of the project to begin with that just weren't. And then I did put a sheet on operational costs here. This was a request that I've had over the last few meetings. Again, we have not occupied concourse for a full year. I did look at a lot of the utility costs prior, but, you know, there was also 500, 600 employees in that building at a time, so they would be quite significant compared to what I would be calculating for. And this electricity one here is actually for only about eight months out of the year is what I've calculated, because we weren't sure exactly when we were going to occupy it this year based on the construction timeline. But everything else are fairly accurate estimates for what you would see for repairs and maintenance and custodial wise, and then you can see the total operating expenses there. Has nothing to do with anything I'm presenting today. And then you can see the total operating expenses there. It has nothing to do with anything I'm presenting today. I just want you guys to be aware of what that would look like for the county. So any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any questions from the public? And I figured we'd ask them up here, Mr. Ross. Can I?
So a couple of things. And the reason I can support this is because the 10% falls within industry standards. I mean, like you said, it could be eight or 10. In this case, it's 10. But another reason is you got a 76,000 square foot building. And if we look at that on a per square foot basis, it's $8.50 a square foot is the number that you're looking for. And with that being said, we know that the cost to build a new office building exceeds $400 a square foot. So when you're talking at 50 a square foot to complete the building per plans and specifications, I don't have a problem with it.
Thanks.
Chair.
Commissioner Hattcock.
So you explained this to me in the back. Thank you, Mr. Davis. So CO2, CO3 landscaping and CO5 is the 194, 790. And then you have 7,290 left, right?
Correct.
Okay. The 144, you didn't put it in there because that was a carpet and was a different request than the contingency. Okay. And then the last, the outstandings are 260, 649. So when you added those two together, basically with the 144, that's where you came up, the 592, 551. And your balance. So basically today you're asking us for about 58,000, bottom line.
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for explaining that. So I was looking at it going, okay, these aren't adding. And what I did was the 144 with the carpet. So thank you for explaining that.
Any other questions from the left side here? I think we appreciate it. I'm just going to go off track a little bit because, you know, as you proposed, showing it up on the screens up here. I know Commissioner Durst is working on, on some, some technology that's going to bring a lot of this stuff to the screen. So the audiences on the outside can see what's going on. So we appreciate that. And moving forward, we'll hopefully be, we don't have a timeline, but we're going to be bringing most of our agenda items up as you do. So it helps, it does help us and it helps the audience understand what we're talking about. We appreciate everything you've done on this. And we, I toured the building out there and we've seen the drainage uses. We've seen the, you know, the, the changes that you're asking for. And it's well within the perspective of what you're doing. So do we have a motion on the floor?
Chair. Move to authorize buildings and grounds to utilize a 10% contingency spending authority for 900 concourse remodel project totaling 649,300.
Second.
So we have a motion from Hattcock and a second from Mr. Ross Connect. Any public comment on that motion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And this is from our, our highway patrol guy. It says Joe Miller, but I know and I'm not going to tell you. He's in Florida, 75 degree temperature down there, basking in the sun. So is it Sean?
Yep. Sean Smith with Pennington County Highway Department.
This is a joint powers, maintenance, encroachment and financial agreement, high friction surface treatment. We all know what that is, right? So.
Audience might not, you might want to have him explain it.
Yeah, I was just teasing you guys.
So what you have before you is we're looking to do an agreement. It's a safety project with the South Dakota Department of Transportation to install high friction surface treatment. Basically, it's a treatment that they put on the road surface. It kind of helps with roadway departures. They came to us and asked us to put together a list, which we did, on areas where we see issues with departures from the road. They then took that, looked at it and they look at any of those areas that have fatalities. That's their big marker there is fatalities. They came back with two portions on Old Hill City Road and one portion, one curve on Playhouse Road to install this treatment. We've done it in the past out on Nemo Road or South Canyon portion. And then two years ago, we did it on Sheridan Lake Road, the curve, first curve coming up the hill out of town there. So it's just a, it's kind of an epoxy type treatment where they put a texture on the road to help provide a grit for your tires to hang on to and, and provide traction.
That'll help Commissioner Ross Connect when he's riding his street bike through there.
Yep. Yep. So as this is a safety agreement, it's a cost share. 90% of that will be covered by the South Dakota Department of Transportation, 10% that would then be covered by the county. The estimated cost is about $61,000. So the county would be responsible for about $6,100.
Perfect.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So the location closest to Hill City, in fact, it's just north of Commissioner La Croix's rental.
Correct.
There was a person killed there last year on a motorcycle and there was a person killed the year before on a motorcycle. So
Correct.
I totally agree with that one. And the one to the south closer to the hill, Keystone, that's kind of a sharp corner and I can imagine there's been quite a bit of.
Yep. That, that's one of them where you, that's kind of where we run into the issue where just because people depart the road doesn't mean they're reporting it. So that's one that we knew was definitely a problem issue. But yeah, they might go off the road and then they get themselves back on the road. So yeah, we were happy to see that that one was included. So.
That's awesome. Awesome. $51,000 if we can save someone's life, there's, that's a no brainer. Do we have any other comments from Commissioner Drews?
So Sean, lifespan of this?
Um, let's see. It's, it, I mean, obviously it depends on the wear and tear that our plows and everything do on everything. We did ask the Nemo Road one, I believe was installed in 2017 or 2018. And that one's starting to show some wear and tear. So you're, you're getting about six to 10 years out of it, depending on, depending on the surface.
That's pretty good.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think that's a good question. And would it be going into a rotation at that point? So we?
Yeah. I mean, that's like I said, that's something that we're looking at. I mean, if it doesn't qualify, that is something that we would be capable of putting up to bid on our own to cover the cost.
Gotcha. It will make sense. Any other comments from?
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve the joint powers, maintenance, encroachment and financial agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for project number PH 040347 PCN 06U5 to provide for the installation of high friction surface treatment on portions of the Old Hill City Road and Playhouse Road.
Second.
Who is the second here? Drews. Okay. We got a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect and a second from Mr. Drews for any discussion from the public? How about the commission? All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Sean. Next time you better make Joe send you to Florida when it's this cold outside. So. Item 13, items from human resources, Director Carol Bancroft, interview process for IT Director. And so I think maybe in the end you can tell us if you, it looks like you're asking for a directive on it or?
Correct. That today is just for informational purposes and then I'll be back in the next meeting with a motion that request. So Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County, that we have the resignation of our IT Director Lori Wager, which that is effective as of March 27th. So we have before us the decision as far as how you want to proceed with filling that position because it is such a critical position within the county. And it's very important that this role will require a visionary leader with strong technical expertise and the ability to guide a diverse team. And so, so many projects are out there. And of course, we know cybersecurity is also one of the, the key issues that we are facing across the nation. So there are three options which I have presented here. But if there are other options that you want to entertain, that we certainly can discuss that as well. The first option is to look for internal promotion. If we feel we have a current employee with a strong background and ability with their credentials for promotion, that that advantage would be that it supports the county or the department's succession planning. Option two is to do an internal posting where we would post the position, opening it internally throughout the county. And that encourages current employees to apply. And that one, we would conduct an initial screening and interviews with the internal candidates first before we would move on to what is considered option three. The advantage of doing an internal posting, of course, promotes the internal growth and it can be quicker and more cost effective. Option three is internal and external posting. And so we would post the position both internally and externally and then through the appropriate outlets and markets to attract a wide range of candidates. And the advantage of that, of course, is that it broadens the talent pool and brings in fresh perspective. So just as background information, the county has used all three of these various options historically. So it's not like there's a practice in place that we need to consider following. And again, this is simply informational today so that you can discuss and decide as far as how you want to proceed. And then I'll bring a motion to the next meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yep. Okay. I figured we'd have quite a few.
Carol, you know, thanks for putting this together. And I, I've looked at each option. And I think when we sit there and look at what the requirements are for this particular position, I like option three where we, we look hard internally, but we also expand that search to the outside of the county. I mean, that's just my take on, on the three options.
Commissioner Drews.
So my suggestion is a little bit different than what Commissioner Ross Connects is. I like option one to begin with. That doesn't mean that you can't go back and choose another option afterwards. But I think that Lori has done a good job in her succession plan in her office. And I, I certainly think it's worth the time and effort of this commission to spend on interviewing anyone within that office that she has worked on to succeed herself.
Commissioner Hattcock.
So legally, we can do any of these three?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're open to all three. So Commissioner Durst.
So a couple of questions. So getting back to what Commissioner Drews had to say. So is there a good internal succession plan in place that you're aware of?
The prior commission did interview an internal candidate within the department and they felt that this was a decision that should be for this board versus them to make. But it was a good interview.
All right. Second question. When is the, how current is this job description?
It was just revisited last year through the wage study.
And what, when we say it's got a rating of P51, what is that salary range?
I apologize. I don't have that information readily available, but I can certainly have it for you either next meeting or I can send that to you.
I would say, yeah, don't send it to me. Just have it as a discussion item for the next agenda when we talk about this.
So I think we could entertain a motion to have a specific directive for, have the discussion and have a specific direction for the Human Resources Director Carol Bancroft to pursue. Because I believe we've, she's retiring in March. Is that correct?
Yes. March 28th, or 27th, excuse me, is her last day.
I haven't had a lot of time to look at it. I've had some interaction with the IT department. And I'm willing to discuss that with all of you guys and see what makes the most sense. Commissioner Hattcock.
Chair, is this information only and then coming to back the next meeting for a motion, right?
Yes. Thank you.
This one is, right?
This information today.
So we can just put it on the agenda for the next meeting. So do we need to acknowledge this discussion or anything or just move forward?
No.
No, you're fine. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll see you next meeting. Okay. We'll go to item number 14, request, request to review owner occupied status and abate property taxes for Mr. Tom Tennyson. Is Mr. Tom Tennyson in? Oh, there he is right there. We, we seen you last time, correct?
You're Sammy.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Thanks. Thanks for having me back. I'm looking for abatement on the property that we purchased as far as owner occupied. I don't know how much you want me to re-litigate this in front of you from the last time.
I think, Mr. Tennyson, I think that if the commission had some questions for you, now would be the time to ask. And then unless, if you guys have enough information to make a vote.
The Chair.
Or a motion.
I think the point, the point that I'm looking at is that you occupied the home in 2023.
We sold all of our properties in Colorado in October and started moving here in October. And we're not able to occupy until December 1st. And after reviewing the statutes, had I looked at the statutes and read them, I would have answered the question from Pennington County's website differently because they give you one day in order to be in the house and that's November 1st. And from my perspective, we had every intent per the statute of residing in the place and making no other place our home but that property when we sold all of our properties in Colorado.
But you lived in the home 2023.
We've lived in there since December 1st.
2024.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ross Connect. I would like to add something because I spent a lot of time with, with owner occupied. I'd spent some time with Mr. Tennyson on the phone. I spent some time with Mr. Ross Connect on the phone. And the spirit of the law is so convoluted when you read the law. And I don't even think our group can get it right a lot of times. So I, I'm, if, if, if I'm in question here, I, I believe that he deserves an abatement on his property taxes. If you look at the spirit of the law and living in your property in 2024, you clearly met those, those guidelines. There's not a question about that. The question comes in on technicalities on signing a piece of paper. And even the Department of Revenue and the state law are so convoluted that a common, everyday person cannot really. I mean, we, we are really relying on a, you know, on somebody like you saying, oh, you know, how often do you sell your home? Maybe three to five years on average, if at most. And then we're saying, you should be a professional at reading this stuff. I, I consider myself fairly astute when it comes to this information. And I, it's still convoluted to me. I, I would support baiting his taxes if we, you know, get a motion to that direction. Commissioner Hattcock.
Where's Shannon? Is Shannon going to speak on this today? Shannon, you come up and speak on the situation for us? Thank you, sir.
Good morning. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. So I provided a memo that laid out the qualifications for owner occupied. It's not convoluted. It's very simple. I even quoted from Mr. Tennyson's narrative. The law requires that a property owner own and occupy the property.
Excuse me, Shannon. If we're going to have a conversation about something and I'm going to make a comment, I don't expect an argument. What I, my, my point was, in my opinion, it's convoluted. And I will stand on an opinion. I'm not going to be here to argue with you, but go ahead.
I apologize. I didn't mean to argue. In my opinion, it's not. So I, I did not mean to argue with you. So as I was saying, to qualify for owner occupied, the property owner must own and occupy the property as his principal residence on November 1st, in this case, November 1st of 2023. Mr. Tennyson states that he moved into the property in December. So he did not own it. He owned it, but he did not occupy it on November 1st. The law also requires that he provide an application to our office. That application has to come before a deadline of March 15th. And we didn't get an application until timely for the 25 assessment, which he will qualify and it'll be classed owner occupied for 25. So we did, we did not meet any of the, the criteria. It was not occupied on the assessment date and we didn't have an application.
Well, I, I would.
Mr. Tennyson.
I would disagree because as part of the statute.
Mr. Tennyson, I'm, we don't need you to disagree. I think that we understand you disagree. Do we have any more comments from the commission here? Any more questions?
Just his opinion on what Shannon said.
You want, you want his opinion? You weren't here last time.
I can't remember.
Okay. Well, Mr. Tennyson, she's asking for your opinion again.
Yeah, there, there is a part of the statute that talks about making it your permanent residence. And had I known that as part of this owner occupied, because again, I feel that that was the only residence I had and I was going to make my home. And according to that statute, that's all I was required to do in order to qualify. I had gone out on Pennington County's website in 2023 and was attempting to fill it out, but they have that one date and they don't say, go to look at the statutes and read it for yourself. And that one date is November 1st. So when I went out there in 2023 to complete the application, I said, I can't in good conscience qualify for it because I didn't, I was not there on November 1st. But when you look at the sub statutes to this owner occupied, I feel I qualified on November 1st because it was my only principal residence that I had because we sold everything in Colorado and began to move up here in October of 2023. We had no other place to live.
Mr. Tennyson, can you expand on that too and tell them why you didn't move in there in October?
Well, we were moving, we were moving things around, and it took us.
The tenant, you had a previous tenant in there that kind of lifted it into this room.
We had to move them out. It took us three U-Hauls to move all of our stuff out and vacate our property down in Colorado. But we were gone. We had no other residence, and we were making this our residence in November.
So, Mr. Tennyson, so what was the difference between owner occupied and what it was before in the taxes?
It's a 20% lift, and I've paid that 20% since 2020. And I think, like I said, I think I qualified for it back in 2023.
Because you rented till 20, in 2020, then you were paying as a lease in it.
We rented it out from 2020 to 2023.
Three. And then they moved out, like you said, on your circumstances.
Yes.
And then you became the owner of it.
Well, we owned, we have owned the property since September of 2020.
Well, not owner, but owner occupied. I misstated that, sir. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion on the floor or any more?
Mr. Chair, you know, I think what this boils down to, we're splitting hairs.
Yep.
I think a person just got to rely on common sense. I mean, there's no right, no wrong. It's just what we feel is the right for the taxpayers. So with that being said, I'm going to move to approve the abatement request as Mr. Tennyson did meet the owner occupied status deadline.
Have a second.
I'll second that.
Got a motion from Mr. Ross Connect and a second from Mr. Drews. Any discussion from the audience? Discussion from the commission?
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
So, yeah, I understand what the law is, and I understand, I mean, I've gone through the documents. I wasn't here at the last meeting. But I think the law is quite clear. And so when you go for these abatements, if, you know, when you're going down the form and you're asking the Director of Equalization or the auditor to sign off on these abatements, and it's in compliance with state law, I say that the timing of this is not in compliance with state law. And so the abatements, and when you get back to this and you look at these abatements and they go back to Department of Revenue, it's a reminder that all abatements, it could be a fire, it could be whatever the case may be, all of those tax abatements are spread out to everybody else in the county and that district. And so when you're looking at these abatements, no different than a TIF, and some of those, those dollars are spread out. So when the auditor sends this back to Department or to the state, and they go through these abatements, they assess what that delta is, and it goes back out. And I understand the situation, but I think the memorandum from our director is quite clear. This does not feat, I would not sign off on this abatement if I had to put my name on it. So that's my position.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Discussion from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion, all against? Same sign.
Aye.
No.
Let's do a roll call.
Drews?
No.
Drews?
Aye.
Hattcock? No. Ross Connect?
Aye.
Wyffenbach?
Aye. Motion carries. Read it to. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, commissioners, for hearing me out. Appreciate it.
Okay, we move on to the next item. Where are we at here?
15.
15. Request for approval of annexation of a portion of Pennington County into Rapid City. Mr. Daniel Crowe. And I think that this has changed, proposed application for tax increment finance, so continued. So I think this is a little bit different here. Is Brittany here or Jason? And we've changed this around a little bit. I think there was some confusion on the tax district. And I think what is happening here, Jason, is that the county is taking this tax district over. Is that? Is it, what are you looking for from here?
Yep. Jason Tennyson, Assistant Planning Director. We did have a meeting with the city last week. Commissioner Wyffenbach was a part of that meeting. There was some discussion, a proposal by the city that the county take on this TIF. I believe the applicant is here to petition the board on that idea, if you'd like him to come up and present what he has.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, and I wanted to just preface a little bit. I was at the committee, and we were, we were trying to, because they're building on Quail Road, and which is going to affect the drainage down below the racetrack. And the planning director, Jason and Brittany, were looking for opportunities to try to cure this. And if the, if the city did the TIF district, they could not do any repairs in the county that was not the city or outside of the TIF district boundary. And there was also going to be a traffic like that needed to happen. So basically, we would have stymied this whole thing from happening had the county not took the lead on this tax district. So I'm hoping that makes a little bit of sense to the commission here. And moving forward, I think Jason can answer most of those questions because they have put together a proposal for Mr. Crowe going forward that to include in the tax district that we are going to fix the drainage below the racetrack, which goes into David Lamb and Andrea Anderson's land and goes into the Murphy Ditch. And at the same time, provide for a street light, which keeps us from having to annex a little piece of roadway. And the city was like, they couldn't do the traffic light, but they were going to basically stick the taxpayers for this traffic light that had, that has to happen with the development that's happening in this area. So that's kind of a preference of what we're trying to do here. I think we're trying to give you guys the authority to move forward with this TIF. Is that correct?
That's right. Yep. I believe that's what the applicant is here to petition.
Okay. So we have, so we have Mr. Crowe come forward?
Correct.
I seen him in the audience somewhere, Mr. Crowe. I'm trying to summarize it for you to help you move it forward a little bit more, so.
Well, essentially, what we arrived at last week with the city, a meeting between the city and the county, was that, as you've described here, if if we were to change directions and have the county authorize the TIF district and and permit it to take place, it would give the county an ability to raise some capital that the city was not going to be required to pay to mitigate any drainage issues that either now exist or might exist in the future due to the development of the subdivision that we're doing. And so it's, it made sense, abundant sense to everybody in that meeting. And there were 20 people there that represented the city and the county. And I think this, this is an opportunity for the county to actually gain a position in the Quail Ridge subdivision that would allow for future TIFs if necessary on assets that it would not otherwise have to work with. So I think it's a very sensible compromise between the city and the county to have the city defer the opportunity and and to give, give way to the county so that it can add to the tax increment financing mechanism funds that it would otherwise have to come out of pocket.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
Chair.
Yep. Commissioner Hattcock.
So last time I said it was a great idea about putting a Safeway in the commercial on on where you're putting it. We've been looking at that area and down Twilight Drive with the planning department for a while to make commercial for people out there. So you'd be at the beginning of that, which would make sense for the county. Plus, again, we're going to take care of the infrastructure that's needed, not only for yours, but for future development going, going on that area where that drainage is going to make a difference for who's next. So this is a win-win for the county, for me, I believe, sir. And again, I think it's a, it's a good vision, and it's a good vision for our county moving forward, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Dan, how long you been working on this project?
Since May of 2022.
So it's been, it's got vetted quite a bit.
Well, I would have to suggest that that's very accurate observation. We've gone through a rezoning, and we've gone through a preliminary plat process. And during the preliminary plat process, it became abundantly clear that the offsite improvements overwhelmed the development potential due to cost versus value of land. So we began to work on coming up with a way to sensibly install the offsite improvements that were necessary for the benefit, not only for the property, but for the neighboring areas. So a TIF district became the obvious answer. And with with a little bit of fortitude, we just moved forward and put all the pieces together. And and we have a, at present, we have an application to the city of Rapid City that's been accepted after quite a bit of vetting. And that application can simply be shifted over to the county. All of the basic information applies to the county just as it does to the city. So it won't be much of a problem to change the application now to the county instead, and I'm prepared to do that.
So going back to the TIF, have you established a base value?
Yes.
And then you were talking, this could possibly be, I think their TIFs are 20 years. You're saying that you, you could retire that eight to 10 years?
Without the additional burden of the county's need, it was sitting between 10 and 11 years of retirement just based upon one of four phases of Quail Ridge and no use of the Safeway Center. So it's actually a gold mine sitting there for a basis to substantiate a TIF that would provide for offsite improvements of whatever nature. And drainage is certainly one that makes a lot of sense, and it should be there. So I think the groundwork that was laid for the city, while we weren't really aware of of the opportunity, it turned to become an opportunity for the county in a way that was plainly obvious, and the city recognized it, and they were quick to agree to it. I give a lot of credit to the city for being cooperative in that way.
But, you know, when you, in the TIF, what are the improvements going to be to these particular lots that you're, that's going to be in the TIF?
Virtually all of the wet and dry utilities that have to service 45 acres of land had to, had to be installed in order for even the first phase to be operable. So wet and dry utilities, traffic management facilities for the near term, and drainage. But it didn't include the drainage that you, you would like to have accomplished as well. So there's a lot of room in the value base of this property if it's included in the county's Aegis to provide for not only what we're doing and what Safeway would be doing, but also neighboring needs that weren't part of it before.
So the current zoning is office commercial?
It's office commercial, which oddly enough, at least in the city of Rapid City, allows for multifamily as well.
Okay, so it could be a multi-use, a little bit of commercial.
Well, I think with the Safeway Center included, it's going to be a grocery-anchored retail center and then multifamily surrounding it. There could be other uses, but that makes the most sense to all involved so far.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross Connect. You got anybody over here? Commissioner Drews? Any questions? Commissioner Hattcock? So I think Jason, I'm bringing Jason back up. So you, you want a directive from us, is that correct? Like that you can move forward on this process of this, of transferring the TIF from Rapid City to the county? Or what are you exactly want from us today?
Right. I believe if the board agrees that this is a good idea and beneficial to the county, the applicant would take the direction to rescind the application from the city and apply through the county.
So we would give that authority here with the motion? Is that what you're saying?
More or less direction to him.
Okay.
If that's what he wants to do.
Two different motions. So the first one would be to move to continue this item indefinitely, meaning it was the one with the city TIF is what we're continuing indefinitely.
Yep. Okay. So if we want to dispose of the previous, so we would get rid of the city's application for the annexation, so, okay. So the motion would be to move that forward indefinitely?
Yes, sir.
Or continue it indefinitely? Does that make sense, guys? There is a motion on there to annex part of the streets on.
Concourse?
Yeah, Concourse.
And Jolly.
And Jolly. So we would be eliminating that motion by moving it forward indefinitely or tailing it or whatever the case may be?
Yeah, and that motion is the request for approval of annexation of a portion of Penny County into the city of Rapid City.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, we do have a memorandum from the highway department. Can you speak to this, please?
Oh, thank you. Okay, yep.
She wants to know if they can get a map.
Yeah, Sean Smith, Pennington County Highway Department. Yeah, that was our, our intent was to move it forward indefinitely so that we can come back to this if need be, because we do want to continue talks with the city under qualified law with the boundary roads. That is something that we would like them to annex and continue with. Just wouldn't be a part of this TIF application.
Okay. So we have a motion. Can we get a second?
I'll second.
We got a motion from Commissioner Hattcock and a second from Commissioner Ross Connect. Do we have a, any discussion from the audience on this motion? Seeing none. Any discussion from the commission on this motion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So we're going to move this forward. Now we need to establish a direction for Mr. Crowe to move forward to move his, his TIF application and everything from the city to the county. Is that correct? Or do we even need that? Or we just let him go forward and do that?
Yes, I think that's the best course of action. Just let him go forward with that with the city.
So we're done with that. That extinguishes that item. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
Thank you.
And for the commission's knowledge here, Brittany has a lot of this stuff, and Jason has a lot of this stuff. And then Mr. Crowe has opened to any conversations that you guys want to have with him. And he can give his information to you guys through Brittany or Jason. So I think it would behoove yourselves to have a good conversation with him. So thank you. We'll move on to item 16. United States Department of Agriculture, new federal rules requiring electronic identification tags. This is a resolution in opposition to mandatory electronic identification livestock tags. So I have some speaker request forms on this item. So how do we want to handle these? They are both in support of, so there is no opposed. So I'll let you go ahead and say what you have to say, and then we'll talk about that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing this. I was unable to attend. I am Doris Lowing, the Executive Director of South Dakota Stock growers. I was unable to attend the last meeting as we were holding this in another county at the same time. Stock growers, the South Dakota Stock growers was formed about the time that the county and the city were formed. So we were in our building blocks just as you were. In the year 1880, there was 40,000 head of cattle that we were encumbering with here. So I want you to think back to where we all started, where our roots came from. And livestock is, is a great majority of that. So we come to you asking you to imply this resolution into the county of Pennington for the simple reasons that, one, we have a South Dakota state law, 40-3, that 27, provides for the confidentiality of identification records, and that allows us as livestock producers to use whatever form of ID we want, whether it be electronic, a metal ear tag, a brand. And this, this law has been in effect, and it protects our livestock producers. So with doing this, we have a rule that was established on November 5th, 2024 by the USDA. That rule is implying that everything 18 months and older, sexually intact, crossing a state line must have an electronic ear tag in. That is going to be to the producer's cost. They gave out 316,000 tags to the state of South Dakota last year in 2024, and they ran out. We have producers, we have one here today that had, that is, and I hope he does talk, that they are telling us that in order for us to bang our, our young livestock, under a year of age, we have to put in electronic ear tag. That rule does not imply that, and that rule overrides our state law. So we are asking our state, we are sitting down here at the Black Hills Stock Show. We're getting petitions signed. I've got currently 11 pages of signatures, and we are only halfway done, of people in opposition of this rule. So we're simply asking you, the county commissioners, to take the authority to join 11 other counties. So we're simply asking you, the county commissioners, to take the authority to join 11 other counties, and I can read them all off here. There's only one, Lawrence County has not made a decision yet, but we have, Mead did theirs last week. In fact, Butte County is going today, so I chose to come to see you guys. So we're, we're trying to get this across the state, so that you guys can protect us, the livestock producers, so we can move forward effectively, efficiently. There is nothing about traceability that this is going to help. This is our choice. If we want to use the tags, we have every right to use those tags, but the government should not be able to tell us what to do. So I stand by for questions, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I have another speaker request form from Florence Thompson. Florence, you have the floor. Just state for the record who you are.
Thank you. My name is Florence Thompson, I live near the big metropolis of Caputa, South Dakota, and Rapid City's sister city to the east, in case you've never been there. It's easy to miss. Anyway, this is not a law, it is a rule that came out of the USDA. We fought it off one time, and now they brought it back again. This is a liberty-killing rule, because it isn't just the ear tags in cattle. What it is, it's the, the digitization of the cattle herd, and all of the ranchers as well. So if your ranch, your, your cattle have numbers, and they're ear tags, but your ranch has to have a number too. Your, every premises you have has to have a number. So if you move your cattle from one ranch to another that you own, even if it's just down the road, that has to be reported. What this does is, we see it operating in Europe. This has enabled the EU to take control of the, all the cattle livestock in Europe. And we saw them make the producers in Ireland get rid of half their cattle, because of cow farts, basically. The new green agenda, which is, you know, supposedly saving the earth by getting rid of carbon dioxide or methane. So it's, it is a freedom-killing rule, and it is only the beginning. They say, well, it's just state lines. Well, soon it'll be, as she said, now they're saying every, every cattle, every calf has to be, have a tag. And these tags do not, do not last, for one thing. They're easy to lose. I have one cow that is a registered Brown Swiss that came with an ear tag, and she lost it immediately. So that's like 100% loss. Every, every cow that had the ear tag, lost the ear tag. And people will say that at the sale barns and in the stock trucks, there are tags laying around everywhere. So it's, it's supposedly $100 to replace an ear tag. That's quite an expense to a producer. So basically, this, we're asking you to support our fundamental rights, our fundamental property and privacy rights, and we, we thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. And I, I know that there's going to be probably some comments. I think that the commission here is very in tune to the agricultural world out here, so.
And that probably didn't.
Oh, we have another audience. We don't have a speaker request form from you, but come on forward. Come on forward, we want to hear from you.
I think they're going to like it.
Hopefully, we won't.
Thank you very much. I'm Rick Fox, producer down in Charmosa. Apologize for, I was torn this morning and...
It was the theme of the day for our picture, it was to dress western today, so.
I should have dressed up a little bit, but I cussled and got air.
You look good.
I'd just like to say, I'm a rancher at Charmosa, we do a lot of business here in Rapid, it's kind of our main hub. This mandate really doesn't do anything that isn't already being done. And as a matter of fact, I feel it hurts our traceability efforts, because if you rely on just an ear tag and do away with the other forms of ID we're using, it's much like any kind of investigation case or whatever, I, I would think all the sheriffs and cops around, if you're just going to use a fingerprint and you can't look at any other evidence to trace something back, you're kind of putting yourself in a pretty small box. Producers didn't ask for this. We fought this thing for probably over 20 years, trying to keep it at bay. This time, the way USDA rolled it out, they, they kind of got caught the time before this, they didn't do a comment period, and we got them stopped there. And so this time, they did a comment period, but they forgot to really look at the comments, because 90% of the comments was opposed to this rule. I think most of your ranchers, I've only heard of one, I guess he was here at the last commissioner meeting, that was for this, and I've probably talked, I've done a lot of traveling in the five-state area in the last two, three months at producer meetings, and probably 1,200, 1,500 people I've talked to, sale barns, veterinarians, they're not happy with this rule, the way it got pushed down, so, and the rollout, like was mentioned before. Ear tags was in short supply, they're supposed to be free ear tags, well, there's nothing free. We all pay for them. But anyway, I would strongly support you guys to pass this resolution for your Pennington County ranchers.
We appreciate you coming forward, and we know sometimes how hard it is to bring forward, we appreciate your comments, and any, so any...
Let Jerry go first, since it's...
Okay, yeah, Jerry. I know, Mr., okay, Florence, if you want to make it quick, that'd be good.
I neglected to mention, I'm also representing South Dakota Citizens for Liberty.
Okay.
Because this is a liberty affecting.
Okay, thank you. And then we were going to go to Jerry Durk first, he's spent a lot of time working with the ag community on this resolution, so.
Yeah.
Commissioner Durk.
Doris, could you come up? So, yeah, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good. So a couple of questions, and so when we get my issue, I support this, and I worked the original resolution that came in December, I reworked the resolution to kind of get it down to one page and capture, you know, what I thought was important in the message it was trying to get across, and incorporate, you know, Senator Mike Rounds' opposition to it. So are you okay with the resolution that I've amended based on what you guys have provided?
I am. Excuse me. The South Dakota Stock Growers was the one that actually worked on the first resolution with the Todd County GOP, so that's why it had that in there, and we appreciate you documenting that. I did see that just last week, and the National USDA 2013 was eliminated, and I sent that back into the office through Travis to include that, but otherwise, that was perfect.
All right, yeah, I added that in.
Yes, thank you. That, that was the only thing I seen in error, I wanted to make sure it was clarified.
And so when it comes down to these resolutions, and I mean, Commissioner Drews and I have talked about it, but when it comes down to a resolution that the county approves, that's something that's got to get published in the minutes of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
And so, and there's a different laws regarding resolutions, and my question I would have is that, not a question, it's kind of a comment and a follow-up from you, I would like to see, you know, before some of these things get passed at the federal level, if there's an impact that we can have at the local level through our board to support our ag community if those issues arise, and I'm not sure if the county commented during a comment period, but my question would be, did you, did the stock growers or other ag organizations come to the commission at some point in time during this comment period and say, you know, could you guys write a letter just like Senator Rounds did, or did we wait until the mandate, the rule was passed and the mandate is out, and then asking for resolutions?
The comment period was open to all livestock producers, in which Mr. Fox had stated that numerous people, and it was actually opposed on the national level, it never made it to the state level. So we, the stock growers, are trying to get the counties, we are going to go then to our attorney general with these petitions and all of the county resolutions, and asking that, that this rule will now allow our state law to stay in effect. So when we have the, the rule, a USDA rule, not a constitutional amendment, telling us we have to do this to cattle that are less than 18 months old, they've overstepped their boundaries. So we're just asking for the compromise to have everybody go in and support us so that we can get our state law enforced.
All right. So...
I hope I answered that.
No, you did.
We, we did not need to have to come to the county level at that point.
All right, I appreciate that.
So Commissioner Drews, can I interrupt you for one second? And I seen Jerry Mater, did you, you came in a little bit late, and we were going through the public comment, did you want to make a public comment? I know you...
Just make a brief one.
Sure, just make a brief, and then we'll, we'll go back to Commissioner Durk. So just state your name and where you're from, Jerry, and then make your comment, and...
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Jerry Mater from New Underwood, South Dakota, and I'm a rancher, and I guess, I, I think Doris and Rick probably touched on most everything. My feelings on it, if people want to use the electric ID, that's fine with me, but I don't think it should be mandatory. It looks like it's just a way to try to get control of the food supply, and that makes me a little nervous when the government has control of that. So just one more step for government control, in my view. Any questions?
Oh, thank you, Jerry, we just wanted to give you a chance to, I'm going to go back to Commissioner Durk.
Yeah, I might have one question, so will windmills blow these tags off?
Oh, yeah. We can always hope.
Right. Hit only hope. All right.
All right.
Thank you. Commissioner Durk, do you have one?
Yeah, a couple more comments, and so getting back to what Doris spoke to, I think it's quite relevant. I did, when I called the Animal Industry Board to have a conversation with them about, you know, some of this information, which I put in a memorandum, there was a shortage. And so when you look at it, I mean, they initially, nationwide, USDA issued 8 billion ear tags nationwide, and then for 2025, they're looking at that allocation to be just 3 million. And so initially, when South Dakota got that allocation, they sent the tags to the sale barns because of the commerce going interstate, and to make sure that those were covered. And I asked the Animal Industry Board at that time, just last week again, has the state taken a position on this? And they said, no, we just kind of stayed neutral. And so I like the approach, because I think on some of these, it's getting the state, not only at the federal level, but on some of these issues, I think the state should get involved and take a position on these. So I, I had questions initially, I understand how it came about, and just like I did have a conversation with Jerry Mater and my community, and a few other producers that are opposition to this, and so anyway, if there is no more comment?
Thank you, Commissioner Durk. Any more comments? Commissioner Roskin.
So when I look at the, Jerry's version of the resolution, it says, on second clause, the cost of implementing the EID tagging system disproportionately impacts small and medium-sized independent farmers and ranchers, while the larger corporate owner-owned herds may benefit from the cost-saving practices such as group tagging. And so I asked Jerry, his district, which encompasses most of eastern Pennington County, relative to corporate or the, the medium-sized independent farmers, his district encompasses just about 100% the medium independent farmers, and therefore, you know, Ron Jeffrey said, number one industry in South Dakota is ag, and, you know, we, we need the support, ag, and I think we need to support our independent operators as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Those are good comments. Commissioner Drews?
So I think Commissioner Durk did a good job in revising this, so I think it fits our platform very well. And I, I think he made a good point when he asked the stock growers, when you do have something that you think you want involvement from the county on, to bring it forward to us, not all the time are we aware of some of those things that obviously come before your organization. So I, I think that would be good. And I, I totally agree that the mandatory is the part of it that I don't like either. I don't like anybody establishing mandatory rules and regs that we have to follow, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Commissioner Drews, oh, Commissioner Hancock?
So from the beginning, when Travis brought this forward, and he worked with you guys, I thought it looked good, but it does work a little bit easier, and people will read not more than usually one page, they'll take the first paragraph and the last, as we know, when you want to proofread real quick. So Commissioner Durk's rewriting this and kind of breaking down what you guys said is, it looks really good. I agreed from the moment this came forward, it was government overreach, I had a lot of small and medium-sized ranchers and farmers that visited with me on the issues. If it works, and it's not broke, why fix it? If you want to add something that, you know, for the futuristic type tagging and stuff, I'm okay with that, but don't mandate it from the government. So I'm with you guys, and hopefully, this gets our state involved with you guys moving this forward, and with the resolution, like I said, looks good, we can get something done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doris.
I'll just make one comment, I had to lean heavily on my colleagues on this one, because I'm more of a city slicker guy, but I, but I understand the, the importance of the agriculture and our community, it is the number one for the state of South Dakota, and the city of Rapid City, and the county of Pennington County, so we have a lot of agricultural producers. I think this is a good thing to help send a message that we support you guys, and we don't want to tell you how to run your business, so thank you. That being said, we need a motion.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution in opposition to the mandatory electronic identification livestock tags.
Second.
Drew, second.
Okay, we got a motion by Durk, and a second by Drews, so, do I have any comments from the public? Hearing none, any comments from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and we enthusiastically pass this resolution. So, thank you, and I guess we're going to take a little recess here to allow Planning Commission to set up.
No public comment.
Oh, public comment, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, item from the public, yes. Speaker request form is required, which I have none unless there's some out there. Time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its function. Action will not be taken on these section of any of the issues brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this section will be recorded in a minute, so if you come forward, if you have a comment, just about whatever, that, you know, is relevant to our time, we'll, we'll take it now, so. I don't see any, so. Anybody want to come forward on, speak about anything that's not on the commission's agenda, and we will not take action on that item? Okay, seeing none, I guess we can recess for however long it takes Jason to set up.
10 minutes.
10 minutes?
Recess for 10 minutes.
So we'll, we'll recess for 10 minutes, so we'll make it 10:40.
Thank you.
We, we don't need to vote for this recess, do we? No.
Vote on that?
Nope. No? Okay. We'll just let the record show that, that Commissioner Roskin voted to recess, so.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Move the goal into the Board of Adjustment.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Roskin, second from Commissioner Hancock, to go into the Board of Adjustment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, seeing none, motion passes. Any public comment? No public comment, okay. So we are in the Board of Adjustments, so we will turn to Jason Thunison.
Thunison. Morning, commissioners, Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item A is variance COVA 25-0001. The request is to reduce the setback to the property line, to a proposed property line for an existing structure. The applicant is Rapid Valley Sanitary District, their agent is AE2S. The landowners are Donald and Cindy Hauck. Location of the property is 3180 Red Wing Lane. It is 10.11 acres, currently zoned rural residential district. Access is off Redwood Lane, and there is floodway and special flood hazard area on the property. When staff considers variance requests, we do take a two-pronged approach there on the screen, keying in on prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant a variance. Staff found that there is, there's a significant amount of floodway and floodplain on the proposed lot, which limits development and accessibility. Get through this a little bit further, so this is the proposed lot line between the two structures. There is 33 feet currently between those structures, they can meet the 25-foot required setback to the residential garage, which limits the setback to the pump house to eight So going back to the prong two, relocating that pump house would require that it be shut down and taken offline, thereby disrupting the sanitary district's ability to provide water services. Additionally, the buildable area, the proposed... Additionally, the buildable area, the proposed lot is limited by the floodway and floodplain. So without the approved variance, the current water production or future improvements would be restricted. I got a floodplain map here as well. You can see on the screen, these are the two structures in question. You can see the buildable area down below that is, is quite limited. Any kind of future development is going to be pretty tight in that area, considering the proposed lot line. So with that, staff recommends approval of variance COVA 25-0001, as there is a special condition that exists on the property that would create a hardship, and staff recommends two conditions be included.
Chair.
Commissioner.
Move approval of COVA, COVA 25-001 with two conditions per staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
A motion from Hancock, second from Ross Connect, and any discussion from the public? Seeing none, any discussion from, whoop, we got someone up here who wants to say something, I'm sorry. Come forward and state your name for the record and then give us a comment.
Good morning Commissioners, my name's Rusty Schmidt, General Manager for Rapid Valley Sanitary District and Water Service. So I just want to appreciate and thank you for reviewing this and accepting this variance. This is part of our proactive stance that the sanitary district is in. This will be for the future expansions of our, of our intake building and future locations of another potential well site. So it's all part of the growing community and to assisting and developing in this and providing for the future. You guys have already assisted the sanitary district considerably with the recent arba dollars and, you know, we're, we're in the current process phase of drilling our well. We're also, completion of the 12-inch water main connection to Box Elder is completed. The supervisory control will be done this week. And then also the 2 million gallon storage reservoir, the contractors will be back in April to complete that. So at that point in time, when we get to that, I'll visit with the Planning Department or Joe, and then see if I'd like to be able to take all the Commissioners and any county staff to tour our facilities and what you assisted with us in accomplishing. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. If you just hold on a second, I think we have some questions.
I'm good.
Good.
You're good?
Yep.
I'm good.
Commissioner Dur.
How's the well coming?
It, the well as well got delayed because they broke off end of July about 3,300 feet. So we got about a two and a half month delay there because it was on a long fishing expedition. The well right now, where what we have remaining is 300 foot of the production zone. So we're 95%, 90% done. Once the cold weather is creating some hindrances, of course, but once we get to drilling out that production zone, which should only take about a week, then we'll go into the testing phases of the well. And then, as you guys are aware, the RCS was the winning contractor to build the, the wellhouse building. So then that'll be the next phase. So I'm hoping within the next, you know, 30 days, that well drilling portion will be done and completed testing phases and everything, and we can move on to the next step.
All right.
Mr. Rusty, I had a question for you. You talked about the 12-inch water main going to Box Elder. Does that go down country road or just north of country road?
No, it goes down Reservoir Road.
Reservoir Road.
Yeah, we have two tanks, two 250,000 gallon tanks up there, and that's where the 2 million gallon storage tank is built as well, on the very north end of Reservoir Road. And then we acquired easements through landowners up there, and we took the 12-inch over the hill right into Box Elder's connection point at their tank, kind of behind McDonald's there.
Okay, so you'll be providing water to Box Elder?
Yeah, as they need it. If they need it for emergency backup or whatever, we'll, we'll have the availability to provide them that water.
Okay. And does that take up your water right usage then, or?
It does, well, it does utilize some of our water right leases, right? We all have water rights that we're, I'm actually acquiring more right now as we speak, you know, for the future and stuff. But yeah, but nevertheless, the regionalization aspect of helping our fellow communities and municipalities is, you know.
You feel you're in a good position with that, then?
We are, we are in a good position with that, and we're acquiring more. And then, of course, you know, this is long-term, future-wise, you know, the Missouri River Project. I did go to Pier and acquired 6,000 acre feet for the future there, which is equivalent to about 2 billion gallons of water annually, so.
Okay, is any other questions for Mr. Rusty?
No, I just want to say thank you Rusty for all your work and making all this was dreams a couple of years ago, now it's reality, so thank you.
It is, yeah. Well, and thanks to you guys for assisting me and all that, and the district, so.
Thank you. And I think on behalf of the commission, I believe we all feel the same as Mr. Ross Connect, that you've done a great job and run a really efficient system out there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's phenomenal.
Okay, so where are we at here? So we had a motion and a second. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So we're moved, we need a motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustments and reconvene as the Board of Commissioners.
Moved.
So we have a motion from Hancock?
Second.
A second from Dur.
Dur.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. We are now into the Board of Commissioners. And we go to item 19, Planning Uncontested Hearings Preliminary Plan, COPPL 2412, Russell and Joyce Payton, Davis Engineering Agent to Create Track Two Revised and Track Three of Payton Edition Planning Commission Recommended Approval with Four Conditions. So go ahead and get, um.
What's her name?
Present what you need to present to us.
Yeah, Megan Talmage, Planner.
Hi Megan.
Item 19A is Preliminary Plan COPPL 24-0012 to reconfigure lot lines as you had said. This is located at the corner of Sheridan Lake Road and Burgess Road. The properties involved are currently zoned agriculture district, and there is 100-year special flood hazard area on the property. This plat is just requesting to plat a portion of Government Lot 14, which will now be Track Three, along with the southern portion of the property, into Track Two of Payton Edition. They'll be transferring about six acres over. Both lots will remain above 10 acres, so there is no rezone necessary. The applicant did receive a subdivision regulation variance to, for Burgess Road to, in order to not improve to ordinance 14 standards. But in general, staff sees no issue with this, so recommends approval.
Mr. Chair, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, what they're doing. And it's, it's remote enough, next to David Lamb's property way out there on Sheridan Lake Road, that I don't see any neighbors being impacted. With that being said, I'll go ahead and move the proof, COPPL 24-0012 with four conditions.
Motion for Mr. Ross Connect?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Drews. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Move on to item number 2025. This is a Commissioner Dur, says update on proposed bill session activity, any other legislation related items is deemed necessary. We'll just let you do both of them unless there's any motions that need to be resolved. Commissioner Dur, you have the floor.
Yeah, Sheriff Mueller, are you here for this? Did you want to come up and talk about the bill that you guys had on some fees?
The chair will recognize Sheriff Mueller.
Thank you Commissioner. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff again. We had a pretty big, pretty big bill come through this year, and actually I credit it all to our staff, they've been working on this for two years, identifying that we get a very large amount of bill collectors specifically from out of state that utilize our civil process to do research. And previously, if they reached out to us to do research, we do about an hour to an hour and a half of research per civil paper. And if that paper gets returned unserved, we're, we're only able to collect mileage at the state rate for mileage. And so about 84% of our total papers that we get at Pennington County are from bill collectors, and 91% of those are from out-of-state bill collectors, just to give you an idea of the volume. And Captain Chris Heislip and his staff in civil worked on this, like I said, over two years. This was the, the right year to take this forward. We got a lot of help. It passed the Senate and the House Committees unanimously, and the opposition said that they've never been defeated unanimously in both committees before. And it passed the Senate, I think there were three or four no votes in the Senate and maybe eight no votes in the House. And so overwhelmingly passed, and it's going to have, this year, in 2024, if that law would have been in place, it would have created $138,000 of extra revenue for Pennington County. So I would estimate that probably be over $100,000 worth of extra revenue for us in 2025 or 2026 for the full year, and then we'll have half of that this year. So the big bill, we've got a lot of things in the hopper that we're working on right now through the Sheriff's Association, but that was the one that I would like to, wanted to mention to you. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you Sheriff. And I just want to make one comment. Basically, these collectors were using the Sheriff's Department as a skip tracer. So we appreciate resolving that issue, so.
Yeah, just another.
Commissioner Dur, you still have the floor, my friend?
Yeah, just another statutory mandate from the state. So, yeah, legislative session, I've been on a couple, one call anyway, with the County Commission Association on their calls, and primarily, a lot of what they talked about a week ago was the bill that was up that had a process for getting signatures to repeal county commissioners, and that went down. I mean, it's been up before the concern has been, that if you start with the county commissioner and you have an appeal process, citizen signatures, you know, going to a vote, then, you know, it doesn't stop with us, it goes on to all the other elected officials. And, I mean, really, there is a process in place, so. And you see a lot of this legislation. I mean, my comment about the legislative session is, you know, if you can have five to 700 bills up in a legislative session every year, we need to rethink that process. And so, you know, it's just too many bills, too many bills to follow, too many bills up, and a lot of stuff that comes at the local level that hits their legislative point of contact, that's, you know, personality-based and issue-based, that's not an issue for the county or the citizens, it's typically an issue one individual has. So one of them, though, that, so I'm not a fan of personally the legislature meeting every year, it's too much. One of the bills that did, I mean, there were several bills up that had interest, and one of them was House Bill 1043, require counties and municipalities to provide emergency medical services within their jurisdictions, increase liquidated court costs, and create the Emergency Medical Service Fund to make an appropriation thereof. And so currently in statute, you know, it says many things regarding counties that, you know, we could fund the fire department, we could fund an ambulance service, we can do a lot of different things, a hospital. So anyway, there is a crisis kind of across the state with the rural EMS services, and I think this was an attempt to get counties and municipalities to put some skin in the game, but that one got deferred to the 41st day, and so hopefully that one will not, you know, make a comeback. Gary and I attended the Legislative Cracker Barrel at Western Dakota VOTC on Saturday, and there was a good turnout of our local Senate and House members there. And the primarily, the two topics of concern were property taxes and the other one that there seems to be a lot of bills on that are kind of cross-connected, related to voting and the integrity of our voting system. So property tax, I mean, that was one that was kind of a, there's different approaches to the property tax and how to deal with it, and some of those going, if you hit that senior category that you would have, and your assessed value would be frozen back to the 2020 level prior to the increase, you know, due to COVID and people coming into the state. And Amber Hulse, our new Senator in District 30, spoke to a lot of election law stuff and how they tie together. I've heard a comment that election law, that there's many bills up there that are conflicting. She kind of spoke to it briefly and said, you have to get back to the process when you register at the motor V, and how that's impacted in statute, and getting your party affiliation and what's required. So if you just had, you go in there with some information, and then you can get a driver's license without being a citizen. And so getting some of those things tagged back to the motor V law, and then getting back to some of the other laws regarding citizenship. And I think there is something up there regarding the amount of days that we have for absentee voting, but there's a lot of stuff up tied to voting and see it work through the process. But she did a good job of explaining why it's cross-connected, because you have to hit the laws that are related to motor V and to our regular voting process. Getting back to the property tax, you know, it's obviously something that we hear a lot, and what the relief is going to be out there for the property owners. And so both on the House and the Senate side, I think there's some legislation back and forth that is speaking to that, and we'll see what comes out. I think Amber Hulse made a, you know, kind of a comment on that as well, Senator Hulse, about, you know, you don't want to segregate one classification of the populace out and say that if you're in this age group or populist group, we'll give you a break, and then if you're over here, we'll give you a break. And so they're trying to work through some of those things, but kind of one of the common themes, it's an understanding that some things got to get done, and everybody's kind of got a different approach to it. And so we'll see how that shakes out, so.
Mr. Chair.
Anything else? Commissioner.
Jerry's with Amber, is Tim Goodwin and Trish and Tony Van de Huisen and Randy, are they all kind of working together on that, some of those projects?
I'm not sure, you know, what, I think Amber's has, Amber Hulse is focused primarily on election stuff, that she's introduced some stuff, and Gary might know a little bit more about that crosstalk between some of the property tax bills.
Commissioner Drews?
Yeah, and they are working together. Tony Van Huisen is not a part of it anymore since he's become the Lieutenant Governor, but others are carrying those on. At least they're going to create some discussions on property taxes. It's not saying that there's anything going to be accomplished with that, but I think they'll get a good start on some conversations, and I suspect it'll probably end up going to a summer study committee.
But I think as Commissioners, we can all agree that going forward with the cost, the infrastructure for the county, that counties won't be able to sit there and rely on real estate taxes to cover the expenses that they're going to incur the next 10, 20 years. You can see what a jail costs, you can, you know, it just, real estate taxes, there's got to be another source of revenue out there somewhere, or to me, a different way of funding the school districts.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And I agree 100%, I'm just going to chime in that there's no doubt, if you look at the budget, that the property taxes don't even come close to covering what's moving forward, and I'm hoping that the legislators can come up with something, you know, even given a sales tax to the counties, because there's a lot of participation from the county that we provide, that, you know, with the jail and the Sheriff's Department, that is, is needs, you know, we need to look at the Sheriff's, you know, the jail going forward, that the participation that we get in the jail, you know, from alcohol consumption, 70 to 80% of those people in there are creating crimes from drinking alcohol. So I know that we get some revenue from that, but overwhelming, it's overwhelming the property tax, you know, people that are, that are paying their property taxes are getting to the brink of, they're getting to the end of their string, I guess. So I appreciate your comments. Commissioner Ross Connect, and then Commissioner Dur, you still have the floor, sir? I mean, if there's.
I've got nothing else.
Commissioner Drews, you have anything to add? I know you've spent a lot of time.
Nothing, nothing beyond that, Jerry did a good job with it.
Okay, yep, perfect, okay. So I don't know if there needs to be any guidance there, I think that moving forward, that we'll just keep working through the process, and we can get our voice heard as a, as a commission that says, hey, we got, we got a golf ball coming down the garden hose, and we need to get the legislators on board. So many times that they, people in the community don't even know who they are. So my campaign will be to make sure they are getting recognized in the fact that they are the ones that can bring some of these solutions to the table, and they need, they need to do their jobs. So their elected officials, I'm not saying that they're not, but I'm just saying that as a county and a local official, we have a golf ball coming down the garden hose, and we need to address it. And they need to be part of that, because they, they changed the state law, which enforces a lot of things down upon us that are unfunded, or things that we have to fund, like the jail, for instance, which we know is, is Commissioner Ross Connect said, is the numbers are staggering. So that being said, we'll move on to item number 21, and we'll return the floor to Mr. Dur, because I just want to preface this with this, just. Because I just want to preface this with this, just for all the commissioners to know that Mr. Durst has kind of taken on a, this budget process and we're looking at a different kind of budget process because of the numbers and, and what's happening, that we're going to, we're going to take a bigger active role in what's happening. And he's stepped up the plate and said, yep, he's had some familiarity with this. So we'll be sharing that information with us that we will be looking deeper into what's going on and making sure we understand where we are spending our money. So with that being said, Commissioner Durst, you have the floor.
All right. So kind of my experience going through a budget process, you know, dating back to my days of being on my local school board, I'm used to seeing information in a certain way. And then my time in county government is presenting budget information. You know, I looked at the 2025 budget process and even during that budget process, you know, I asked some questions to, you know, the auditor and to our commission office. And one of them that kind of struck me and it goes back to, and it's kind of looking at the budget process and it's really tied to, you know, how I'm kind of used to seeing public information presented. It goes, ties with looking at improving on what we're already starting on with the digitized agenda, but working on that to show. So when you have a room, you know, full of 50 people, you would hopefully have that many. And I've heard Commissioner Ross Connect make a comment during the property tax discussions last year that when we do have a budget presentation, you know, that's kind of your time to come in and have a discussion about the impact the budget can have on your assessed value and what that levy is. And that typically, you know, the budget process is, looks like this with department heads, et cetera, and a few people in the community. So I think one thing that I would be looking for is that, you know, we put this information out there. And one of them would be during the budget process that everybody's budgets and everything, as we're talking about the financials, is presented up on the board, on the screen, however we choose to do that, but not just in a budget book or as a department is presenting saying, you know, it's in your roll up of your PDF and you have the packet. I would like more transparency as we go through that. One of that relates to going back and I did ask the question, you know, has the county been presented a five-year line item budget showing expenditures? And the answer was no, we've never presented that way. And I, and the reason I think it's important to present a history of all of the stuff that I provided in my memorandum, talking about annual expenditures, annual revenue, budgeted versus actual expenditures. And so when I hear a department head during a commission meeting talk about adding $300,000 of an expense, and let's just say in the 2024 budget, and I have heard that saying, well, you know, it's 50,000, it's, it's an FTE, it's 100,000, it's this, and is this within budget or out of budget? Well, no, it's within budget. I can make it work. Then that questions me and I go back and go, where in your budget do you have 100,000, 50,000, 300,000? So when you're talking, somebody says, you know, in the larger departments, they can absorb that. It might not seem like a lot, but that might be one small department in the county. That might be your entire budget. And so when you're looking, you know, at some of this information and you, you have smaller departments like the commission office or the registered deeds, you know, some of those offices, I mean, typically I haven't done my analysis on it, but they're operating, you know, primarily at about a, you know, 85 to 90% personnel budget with a 10% operational budget. You get to the larger departments like sheriff's office, highway, you know, some of those are going to have, you know, larger operational costs where you have an opportunity, like in highway, based on not doing a project or not buying a large software, et cetera, whatever the case may be, to absorb some of those. But for me, what I would like to see is a line item expenditures and a history over the last five years by line item. And in your budget, you know, you're typically getting that roll up of the budget line item, but there are many other line items that go underneath that and look at some of those expenditures. And as I, and the reason too is I look at that and then you want to go, okay, what have we typically spent in the last five years? And what does that look like? And with that, going back to, you know, budgeted versus annual expenditures. And so, and some of this information I know the auditor captures, but I would like a five-year roll up of it to show, you know, here's what we actually budgeted and here's what we came in at. And so if you look at, and I'd like to see that by department, but if you look at the 2025 budget and you say that, you know, we have to apply, and I haven't, Cindy, is that number around 10 million again? For applied cash? Okay. So if you look at the budget and let's, you know, last year's budget, I know 2025 budget, but let's just say when you put in all the expenditures and all the revenues and then you add in that 5%, that we have to hold back. To make those different funds balance, you have to throw in that dollar amount into those funds because you can't pass a budget that shows those expenditures as unfunded. And so the auditor then will take those line items and show what revenue is coming in and, and what those fund balances are outside of the general fund, but in the general fund as well, showing on those expenditures, highway, et cetera, and some of those restricted fund balances, that your budget, you're actually showing enough revenue that you can operate those expenditures. And so when you get down to stating, you know, what that number of applied cash is, so let's just say in theory, you say that you're going to apply 10 million to the 24 budget. And it was just about 10.5 million in applied cash to the 24 budget, which we just completed. And so when the auditor goes through it, reconciles everything for that fiscal year. And then, you know, there's a report that goes back to legislative audit and you do an accounting of this is how you closed out that fiscal year. And then you look at, you know, which I think is a good, good thing for us to look at. If you say that you were going to apply 5 million, 10 million, whatever that number is to make that budget balance, because you don't have enough revenues to equal your expenditures. And so then what does that look like and how did you finish that fiscal year? And so it's a good track record to go back and look at those and say, we projected, you know, that we have $131 million budget. We projected that we were going to have to apply $10 million. And when you get done with all of that, you know, we came under that amount and so we didn't expend 100% of our budget. And so when we're talking about some of these things, I, that's why I'd like to look at, you know, five-year history of all of this data. And then you can develop a trend and go, you know, well, out of the last five years, even though we projected that we were going to have applied cash at whatever that number is, you know, we finished out that year and we had no applied cash. And so it kind of gives you an idea as to when you're passing a budget and you're looking at these projected revenues and expenditures, you know, how close are we coming? And then it gives you a chance, I think, when you look at those line item expenditures, that you could look at those anomalies and go, if we have a one-off, okay, this year we applied cash or, you know, our revenues exceeded what we had projected by 10 or 20%. And, you know, what was the anomaly that we had more revenues than projected? Or did we have less? And typically, you know, there is something that will tell you why that was off a little bit. And so, you know, the information that I've looked at that our auditor presents in the financials, I think she does a great job of presenting that and projecting that. I would just like to see a little more of a breakout and then budgeted versus cash, cash applied, if that's the case. And then tracking that fund balance based on your restricted funds and what that cash position is. And so like in the general fund and then saying, okay, starting our fiscal year, our closeout, if we projected that we were going to have a fund balance of 15% or 20%, whatever that target was. And I've read your memorandums from previous years and I think you captured, you know, what that fund balance turned out to be. And then again, you're making those projections set on what you want the fund balance to be. Is it 15%, 20%, 18%? Whatever that number is. And then looking at that to see how track, on track we've been or what that target goal was reached or not. And then getting into it, I think, obviously just based on discussions that we had this morning. And then looking at, you know, not only the line item expenditures, but getting back to personnel and looking at those personnel numbers and fill rates by department. So typically, let's just say if you've been funding, we've been funding a department and they're projecting that their staffing level, let's just say is 50 employees. We've been staff, we've been funding 50 employees over the last five years. And then you go back and you look at what that average fill rate is over the last five years and maybe it's 90%, maybe it's 85%. And then you could look at, do I want to fund to 100% level when you've not had that? Because as soon as you put that in the budget, you know, that's, that's something that can be expended. And so some of the, that's why I think it's important to look at some of those line items to see. And in the smaller departments, yes, you're typically going to hit that, you know, 100% funded for your FTE and personnel. And you're going to see that that goal has been met in the larger departments with the change of staffing and some of the open FTEs we have, you know, it's going to be a little bit different. The five-year history to include fill rates and then personnel costs because I'm looking at, what are those personnel costs and what have they been over the last five years? So I typically ran, I kept a 10-year history of that in my previous budget stuff, but five years would give us an indication as to what the personnel costs have been in relation to our budget cost and what percent of our budget is going up and where is the money going? And then, but looking at our personnel cost to show in our, you know, how much over the last five years of our benefit package increased in relation to our wages. And, you know, I've made it known that, you know, talking to the comp committee and department heads that in the 24 budget process, you know, putting in a $3.1 million personnel package into the preliminary budget without having that approved by the board in advance is not something I would like to see. It's just a change in process. And so getting down to, then again, outside of, you know, just those typical day-to-day operational costs and personnel. And I think before we can really dive into, deep into the budget process, I did notice in the budget process of last year that there are departments that have basically what I would deem a contingency put in their individual budgets. And so there was a discussion about fire service and where that money was at and how much money it was. And I listened to that conversation and not, not, not laying it on anybody, but it was confusing as to how much that reserve balance was, where the money was kept. Is it in a restricted fund, an unrestricted fund, that type of stuff? And so I know some departments in their budgets have line items where they have put in an expenditure for future projects over the next five years. And then each year they may add a little bit to that. And in my conversation with the auditor last year was that's actual budget authority that is put in that budget once you've approved it. And so if it's something that's allocated over the next three to five years, that's budget authority put in there. How do you shut that off so that in that one fiscal year, they can't, let's just say overrun a line item, but use that money that's in that other line item for a future project to get them through that fiscal year? And she had, she had a good answer. It was, I go it every January and then I shut that line item off so that they can't expend those funds. And I think some of those are open for discussion, maybe a different way that we look at that process. But what I think is relevant, based on what we have with all the building projects going on, the conversations, you know, we just took a tour of the buildings and the project, the number one project that I see outside of what's already in motion right now, you know, for us as a county is the jail project. And so every other department has a project over the next five years that they would like to move through with. They've already allocated maybe some funds in their budgets and, you know, and again, there are restricted funds set aside for those. But I think it's time that we put everything on the table and we kind of peel the onion back a little bit and have a look at everything that is going on in the organization and talk to department heads about, what are the goals for the next five years? What projects do you have? How are you accounting for those funds? And it's time that I think we have to get down to and have a discussion about prioritizing those projects and what they look at, look like. And I think the only way to get there is to, you know, really provide a lot more financial information so the board has an opportunity to look at that and ask questions. And not that the budget process has been on a rubber stamp process, it's just something that I, you know, I individually, when it came to the budget process, would ask for and say, I would like to see it in a different way and here's how I'd like to see it. So that's why I'm bringing it to the board to kind of have a conversation about before we really get into the budget process. Cause there's a lot of things, obviously, that I think about that I could go to every department and ask this question and say, from you, I want to see this, from you, I want to see this. But I think it should be a collective decision made by the board that we're not tasking individual departments. So it's something too, getting back to it, that I know that the auditor's office is going to have a heavy lift this year because we're transitioning from a current financial module in Springbrook and going to Tyler Technologies and NCO 10. So just on the operational side as to how the county does our bookkeeping and our finances and payroll and the different departments that are tied into that. Transitioning over to that Tyler Technology that I think anyway, just based on a little conversation I had with Cindy last year about this, that, you know, Tyler Technologies Financial Module, I think, is able to do a lot of things different than what is currently being able to be done in Springbrook. And this is a year of that transition. But some of the information I'm asking for to be, in my opinion, in conjunction with the auditor's office, would be stuff that should be coming out of our commission office. And so I think that a lot of the work on this would be coming from the commission office in conjunction with working with the auditor's office and the other department heads to kind of get to this point. But I think, you know, the budget, you know, and the auditor is the one that has the heavy lift in all these financials. But I think it's in partnership with this board and, you know, that we can provide some assistance and guidance as to how we would like to see that. And, you know, the statute does say the Board of County Commissioners will present the budget. And I think that we should be looking at a different way as to how we present the budget within our own organization and to the taxpayers that have an opportunity to comment. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Durst.
Mr. Chair. So Jerry, first of all, we got to figure the annual revenue, right? That's going to be the number one step and we'll know what we got to play with. So when you say annual revenue, you're talking about all sources of revenue. So primarily it's real estate tax, but there's other sources. So with me, if we ever did a presentation and having a pie chart saying this is our annual revenue, whether it's 1 billion, 2 billion, this is it. This, so now that we know what the revenue is, we could sit there as a safety mechanism, say, we're not going to spend. So let's just say the annual revenue is a dollar. We're not going to, the budget's going to be 90 cents because we're going to, because that other 10 cents is a safety mechanism for emergencies. Is that somewhat what you're talking about?
Well, when it gets down to it, yeah, because again, you know, it would be great if we could get down to a balanced budget. So it's showing outside of what we have to hold back, you know, you know, under statute, that 5%. But then get back to the fact that you're going to say my revenues, you know, equal or they're under, your analogy is better. You know, if you have a dollar, spend 90 cents if that's the case, or you could go lower. But it comes down to when you're talking about the revenue, then there's a lot of things that are tied into it. So primarily, you know, our property, let's just say our property tax revenue. And so then that's tied to, you know, what we can, what we can lay over that and how much money we want to take based on, you know, what that assessed value is and what our growth in CPI, et cetera. But it's your budget that determines what piece of the pie you're going to take based on, you know, the budget laid against that sets the levy and the levy is what you're going to take across that assessed value. And so there is a discussion about, you know, how much do you want to spend? And so, yes, we take in, I've, you know, I've heard the number around 53 million in property tax. But the discussion is how much of that opportunity of growth in CPI do you want to take based on our assessed values? And so, you know, and again, counties make those decisions. I've seen you have some years you, you know, you can bank your CPI. You could not take that. You can save it up. You could look at some of those things, but. But the, the discussion about some of that too is you don't, you don't want to, you don't want to take it off your base so much because once you, you know, you take that, that base, I'll just give an example. In the county that I was at, the year that they implemented a wheel tax, uh, based on the big grants, we figured we were going to get about, I don't know, seven-hundred, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand in revenue off the wheel tax. So what that board did is they cut the base, uh, by one-point-one million. Well, then when you start laying that growth factor in that CPI over that reduced base, that compounds over years and you've lost that amount of money. And all of those, you know, and I'm not, it's not a right way to phrase it. You put that money back into the taxpayer's pocket because you didn't collect it. And so it's just deciding, you know, how you want to look at that. But what I'm looking at when you get into, you know, revenue projections from, uh, the auditor's office, when she gets, you know, the factor of growth and we, she plugs all those numbers in and we talk about, you know, here is the potential of what we could take on tax prop-, you know, uh, property tax revenue. And then you get into all the other revenues that we have, which goes back to, well, he's in the room. And so the sheriff is one of those departments, you know, that, uh, office that, you know, has a lot of other outside revenue coming in from different contracts and agreements. And so you look at, you know, all of that revenue from property tax, all of those other agreements and how much, you know, that looks like. And then you, we need to forecast out and look what we anticipate, how we performed at the last five years. Let's have a conversation about what we know is coming to us in the next five years, specifically when we're talking about a major bond issue. And then looking at how we're going to get through that in the next five years without putting, you know, who knows what's going to happen in the legislature, but just deal with what we know is in front of us. And trying to make those decisions and prioritize those projects. And, you know, there might be something, some department or one department has said, in the next five years, I plan on doing A, B, and C. You look at the finances and you say, we can't fund all of this, the priority has got to be, and we need to set what that priority is. So I think it, you know, what I'm looking for is a direction from the board to say what that priority looks like. And we can have those conversations, uh, again, do you want to put it out to department heads and say that next year we, we, we don't want to, we're at a hundred-and-thirty-one million and change, next year we don't want to see any growth in the budget?
You know, what I, what I like is if we do this, the decisions that we make as a board will be more so based on factual data with the presentation that you're talking about more so than assumptions. And, and it's, it's good to make a decision when you got the data to support the decision. So I appreciate your work on this.
I think I'll, I'll summarize a little bit. I think, I think maybe Jerry, what you're looking for, and you can tell me, is some direction from us to say, you want to proceed with this and be able to talk through and have executive summaries when you're done. The, the board needs to present the budget, the board needs to be in tune with, you know, it'd be like, virtually like each one of us having our own personal checking account and how we're going to spend our money today, tomorrow, into the future. How have we spent our money so we can come up with the good solutions and we can present like, things like the jail so nobody's surprised about it? And here's how we're going to do it and, and those types of things. But the, the biggest thing is the, uh, the heavy lifting comes from, Jerry, that's, I mean, if you're willing to take this on, that's a lot of heavy lifting, you know, and, uh, our participation. Because we basically have department heads, we have the highway department, we have the buildings, and then we have the assessor. And the rest of these departments are elected officials. The only thing we do for them, we don't manage their employees or any of their staff, but we do provide the funding for those departments. But it would be nice to know what, what, what we're funding and have it in simplistic form. Like Ron had pointed out, it should be, a budget can be very straightforward and very simplistic when you look at it and say, you know, under, under government generally accepted accounting principles, how do we go forward and how do we plan for our future needs and those types of things? And I think that, I think that what you're looking for is that direction to you to say, hey, Jerry, we're good with this if you want to go forward. Is that correct or?
Yeah, I mean, really what I'm looking for is, uh, you guys to have ownership on this. And it's not just me saying I've got these thoughts as to how we need to move forward because collectively we are a board. And we're a team and, uh, something like this and major projects, because a lot of this, you know, I think once you get it in place, it's easy to maintain, I just haven't seen it in place yet.
I agree with you, and I think that the same thing that, um, Commissioner Ross Connect is requesting too. Because it's easier for us to make a factually oriented decision based upon history, based upon where we are today and where we need to be in five years. And then we can, and then when your, when your constituents come to you and say, why'd you make that decision? You can say, boom, here's why we did it, we did, we did the legwork, we did the, the, the heavy lifting and we understand why we did it and what we're doing going forward. So I guess I'm on board, I guess I would be willing to entertain a motion that would allow Jerry to move forward and give us executive summaries each meeting or in between, whatever he feels necessary and whatever he needs to make this happen. And then once that base is established, Ron, and, and, and commission, like you said, it'll be a lot easier to maintain in the future to say, get us all on the board, I understand they're, they're changing some of their accounting, uh, software, which is a good thing. And then maybe we can get all the departments on board to say, this is what we want to see. And I think that if Jerry gives them that direction prior to meeting with them and then he makes it simpler upfront and then as he goes forward and on the continual meetings with them, they can develop those, uh, a process in place that says, so when we get it, by the time we get it, it's simple as, okay, we got a dollar and we're going to spend ninety cents. I mean, that may be oversimplified, but go ahead, Commissioner Hattcock.
So for me, I'd like to have a meeting on budget, a special meeting, and we have all that discussion. And then the, uh, staff also can be here and understand kind of what we're thinking and have it all broke down. Because you can put it in this kind of basis or we can break it down and then it wouldn't be, um, Jerry's responsibility. Um, because it's going to be put on then Jerry, it should be on, and that, that's what he's saying. And I think it's good because the breakdowns for me is what I think we lacked, uh, last year. In the last few years, to be able to understand the budget, not only ourselves, uh, fully, but also, um, for the people we're spending the money for, the public should be able to understand it. So, um, we used to have special meetings, um, we'd just talk about budget. And then we can bring forward these different breakdowns if that's where we're going. Or maybe somebody by that time, Commissioner Ross Connect says, well, I got one more piece on this. I mean, you have that full discussion that way without having Jerry put it on himself. It should be on this board, putting it on and moving it forward with Cindy and the staff about what this all is going to entail for the future of our planning. And I think we're going to have to start the budget earlier this year, last year was the latest we ever started it. It, uh, April, early May is good because, um, you want to start having those discussions, I think, of what we're thinking for the staff. So we are transparent to our staff as well about what we're thinking in May and June to break this down. So for me, I think it works better and has worked better, not only for this board, but for the staff that has to do the work as well. What's our bottom line for, with all these pieces and parts? And anybody else on this commission can bring more stuff or talk to Jerry or Cindy about, um, what we think it should entail.
Like, like Commissioner Hattcock, in all due respect, I agree, I think, but I think what that intends up doing is getting the cart in front of the horse. I think if we can get a place to start and we can have those special meetings, I think we can add on to it. But if we don't start anywhere, I can guarantee you it's going to go nowhere. I've been in enough of these meetings that that's what'll happen. If we try to do this by committee, uh, we're not going to start anywhere because we're never going to all agree. But if we, if we give Commissioner Dur the direction to begin the process, he can report back to us and then we can have special meetings specifically on these items. And then we can narrow it down if that's acceptable to Commissioner Dur. But we, we do all need to participate.
So, yeah, so my, my comment on this is, you know, I don't want it to solely come from me and have, you know, me go out and have conversations or directions with department head. I would like to be a collective idea that this is something that we're going to move forward with and that it's something that you all would like to see and that we could support. And then in this process, and I know she's waiting to have some comments, so. But, you know, going back to the, you know, elected officials and appointed officials that we work with and say, yeah, we would like everybody's budget to, you know, kind of look like this with this information and then we have that, uh, conversation. So, and it is, I mean, a lot of this information and it's, I'm going to make a comment. You know, it's not like the auditor is not presenting, uh, you know, financial information to the board for the board to make decisions on, uh, it's just a granular process that I'm used to seeing, uh, and presenting that I would like to see. And, uh, my comment about that would be, I have read the information presented by the auditor and I think she does a very good job of prevent, presenting the financial picture of the county.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
Jerry, if I understand it right, you, you want this particular information and you, you got the line items, you know, the revenue, the expenditures, more detailed forecasting out five, ten years. So would, would it, what is, are eighteen departments or there might be more or less, but let's just say eighteen departments. Would we take one department and kind of build a template of what we want? And then once, once we have that, other departments could use that?
I can, yeah, I mean, again, I've got, you know, in my mind how I'd like to see it. But what I think this comes down to is not tasking, uh, a lot of this roll-up, you know, doing financial, you know, an overview of the last five years or whatever, capturing this, this is already documented stuff. You could get off the, you know, legislative audit's website, a lot of it, and then digging into the system and getting some of that. So, uh, to be honest, I believe that this information should be not individually collected from every department and say, you present it this way, you present it this way. I believe the commission office of the board should be working on a project and collecting this information with some assistance and then gathering this information. It's not like they have to go to each department to get it, those reports, you know, are available in the budget recap and roll-up. And a lot of this, I mean, I'm talking about a lot of public information, some of this you could get granular in. But I think it's a proj-, the project I would like to see taken on by the commission office. And then when it comes to the presenting of the budget, that each department come in and in their presentation, a lot of this historical stuff can be captured, I believe, and presented by the commission office. But moving forward in a budget process, have this line item granularity, uh, by the department, that every department is submitting, uh, a five-year, you know, kind of a recap, uh, by line item of expenditures. And if you were funded in this line item, ten thousand dollars in the last five years, you've only spent a thousand. Then let's have a conversation about where that nine thousand, why is it not spent? And getting back to kind of my mindset as to how I think about this. So, you know, in our first meeting in January, we had a conversation about, um, you know, uh, calculation of overtime and policies and things that we have in place. And we were, it came up at a, the first compensation committee meeting. One department ran the numbers as to that paying out accrued leave at time and a half and what that dollar amount came to. And the comments, uh, one year was sixty thousand dollars and one year was forty-nine thousand dollars or thirty-nine thousand dollars. So right at a hundred thousand dollars. And there was a discussion as to, you know, in a larger budget, uh, that really doesn't mean anything. And so we don't have to change the policy, it's, it's not worth it. Well, you capture in one department, one policy or one way that we're operating and that's a hundred thousand dollars. And I'll just use that one for example, and, uh, over a ten-year period, what is that? And so when you incrementally look at some of the things, and I don't really care that our budget is a hundred-and-thirty-one million. And you look at some of these line items and you can go, we could capture five thousand here, we're overfunded here, we're, we're underfunded here. And get a handle on where the expenditures are going and then talk about what the priorities are. And I don't think, you know, and I've said this to some of the department heads, if you make a comment and say, in my budget, I can absorb five thousand dollars, ten thousand, whatever that number is, the first thing I'm going to ask you is, where in your budget do you have that money? And explain to me why it's in your operating budget right now. And then let's have a conversation about how we do that budgeting process. So, um, that's why I think it's relevant to get a look at this because we're the ones that are responding. You know, it's not just us as a board, it's the auditor, it's every elected official, every employee, every, every department head and employee should have an understanding as to where the money is at and how we're spending it. And if they know where it's at, then that tells me that the taxpayers should know where that money is allocated at. And right now, just sitting through, you know, and I've looked at many of them, not just in Pennington, but it's, it's kind of a higher level overview and I'm a very granular individual.
I guess what I was looking at is how the data is collected and how it's presented, just simple as that.
Yeah, I think I'm kind of in the same way.
All right, I can give you examples of that.
Okay, without, um, trying to read your mind again.
Right.
Yeah, without trying to read your mind again, I did promise the, the, um, the, uh, elected officials and department heads that we would give specific direction as best we can. So to narrow it down and then not try to, I won't do that again, trying to read your mind on what we want. What specifically can we do as a commission today, um, to either, you know, to help you move forward or help us move forward with a specific direction that, that we're all feeling? If that's the case, that we want this specific, uh, information or, I mean, because if we just talk about it, we go nowhere, I guess, like that's the point I made earlier. Um, what direction would you want us to see or, uh, we can, a place to start, I guess? And then we can always come back, but the, the department heads at least deserve some sort of understanding of explicitly what we want, you know, or where to start. So I guess that would be the question I would ask, if that makes sense.
Basically, you know, the reason I put it on the agenda was to have this conversation and see if it's of any interest that everybody wants to have moving forward. If it's something you want to see, uh, moving forward, I think, uh, then we can have that conversation as to how you would like it to look. But before we dumpster dive into it, it's just putting it out there to see, is there any interest into looking at some of these things as we move forward? And if there is, then let's decide what that looks like.
I'd go back to what Commissioner Hattcock had said, we'll set up a, a special budget meetings that we can, and then we can have time to put together what we want as individuals. And then we can come together with something that we can, so we can give them an explicit, some level of what they want instead of, you know, just having them try to read our minds and I,
Correct.
and I won't make that mistake again. But so I guess the motion would, could be to put together a special meeting, budget meeting that, you know, had a specific amount of time limit on it so we don't go.
We can do that at the next meeting if you like, put it on the agenda so the staff can listen.
Okay, that's fine, and then we can get some input from them too and at least it'll be on the agenda. But I think this is very important and I think we all probably can concede that that is. And, uh, if we, but I did make a promise to the staff members and the, and the elected officials that we would be specific when we asked them or when we had items that we wanted them to, to bring to the table. So I think that'll be a great spot, a great start. So I don't think there's any motion needed there then. Um, if everybody's comfortable with that, we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting to have a, set up a timeframe of how this may look. And it'll also give us an opportunity to, you know, start our thought process on what we see, what we think is very necessary. So, all right.
Your auditor wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, did, did you want to speak or? I mean, you could come to the special meeting too, so thank you. Um, so the next item would be, uh, items from the chair, commissioner members, uh, and we just go, is there any, like, this is member be, a time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns of the full board, official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring back items before the board or future considerations. And it, so, I mean, it also kind of plays hand in hand with number twenty-three where there's meeting and committee reports. So I'd allow the flexibility, if you don't have a committee or meeting report, that you could share any other thing you would like at the time. And we'll start with, uh, Commissioner Ross Connect.
You know, uh, items, you know, when you talk about items from the chair, I, I think sometimes we need to talk about the emails that we get and how we treat those emails.
That would, I would be perfectly fine.
Because we spend, I spend a lot of time, I can spend an hour trying to respond to somebody.
This is a very good.
Where it makes sense. And so my, uh, in the last week, it would be taxes, dust abatement and assessed values. Those are the, these are the emails that I'm trying to respond to. And sometimes I try to save those emails because a couple of weeks later I get the same question. I just go back to the old email and change the names because at least I'm being consistent. But, uh, just wanted to make, I'm sure we all get emails and I always try. and I always try to, when I get one, I wanna find it, before I close that file, I want, want it to be resolved, one way or another. Uh, with that being said, another item, it's not a committee, but Ron and I met with Jim Goobles with the Mystic District Ranger, because we had, uh, we had a gentleman, or a group of folks that were concerned about dust abatement, uh, on a project called the Sawbuck Project, it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred acres, gonna be between Rochford and Deerfield, and, uh, so when we got and talked to Jim Goobles, he said out of that one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred acres, only four thousand acres are gonna be commercially logged, which would, uh, you know, when you dig into the stuff like that, uh, and you go back to the neighbors, it's not gonna be as bad as you think, this is just the typical size of a logging contract, and so that's how I responded to these folks, and, and they appreciated it, and, but it was good that we met in person so that we could really get down to the nitty-gritty on, on that, so I appreciate Ron taking the time.
I appreciate you just offering me to come there, I learned a lot, I learned a lot about your district there and about all the, you know, the logging concerns, and, and I'm just gonna throw it out there, for anybody that wants some pine beetle wood, get ahold of Ron, and we talked to Jim up there, and he's giving away that wood up there, and people, it's a long distance, but you can burn it as firewood, some of it's really good, my understanding is, and we learned a lot about the pine beetle, about it, all this acreage had burned, but they've been working very diligently on, on getting it cleaned up, and some of Ron's constituents had a, uh, concern about the dust, and so that's how we got together on it, but I think what he's pointing out on the emails, I think we should allow that in this conversation every time, because typically, our emails are a lot the same, I could just change the names and, and do that, so, that being said, Ron, do you have more?
Uh, you know, Brian Aubach, he's our director for the Pennington County House Redevelopment, and, and I've been in contact with him back and forth on various issues, uh, we only meet once a month, but, uh, in the interim, there are other items that come up, or I could call him and say, you know, I'm getting this complaint, so, that, that's always going back and forth with Pennington County House Redevelopment, and I'm sure Deb does the same thing, so, other than that, that's all I got, other than, uh, committee.
Thank you for sharing, and then, uh, Alderman Hadcock, you're next.
So, the planning commission, you saw, uh, the decisions we have made, um, there's pretty much nothing that we talked about that wasn't on the planning commission, um, the campus tour was good, um, very informational, um, I liked going to the different buildings and figuring out, basically, they had to put in perspective, I had to go outside of some of these buildings to get where the buildings were gonna be, and exactly where the Sally Port was gonna be and all that, and I like that, um, just getting a little bit more details, I knew most of the infrastructure, I've been in most of the buildings, but it's nice to be refreshed, so thank you Sheriff's Department and, uh, Buildings and Grounds for doing that, uh, the stock show, we opened that up, what a wonderful, wonderful, uh, place to go, um, and see ag community, again, good old western hospitality, as much as Sarah had said, pretty amazing, um, how much that brings in and how much, even during this cold, how much people still participate and love it, so, um, went there on Sunday, uh, just to see, uh, the civic center, and then this week I'll be at the fairgrounds, or at the monument, I should say. Um, at the mayor's committee, uh, meeting, we talked, uh, same thing about tiffs and drainage, we talked about the no man's land for, uh, highways, seeing if we could find some solution, um, we had two of the chair and vice chair from the city council there as well, and we talked some of the annexation issues, some of the tiff discussion, um, same stuff we usually do if anything else is coming forward, they have some other things that they don't wanna put out there right now on some of the, um, vision funds, um, said they wouldn't report on that today until they had final decisions on it, but just a really good meeting, um, the city's doing well in a lot of things they do, um, Black Cell, their, their main concern was fourteen sixteen, um, Mayor Larson is always, um, involved with a lot of things, asked how Liberty Boulevard's going, they have Boozma, Boozma Construction doing a lot of stuff for him out there for building, um, let's see, the planning work session, always good, they kind of just fill us in with what's going on in the county, comprehensive plans and different things, so, and I did not go the Cracker Barrel either, so.
Okay, it looks like, thank you Alderman Hadcock, or Commissioner Hadcock, I'm sorry, and then we're gonna go to Commissioner Jerry Dur for our healthcare trust board, and building committee is what it says on here, but be free to, if you wanna answer anything about emails or just some other things that came up, I think it, it's a good time for the commission to get into your world, Jerry, you got a lot going on, so.
I don't think you want to.
Okay, I take that back.
All right, so the healthcare trust board, yeah, attended my first meeting, and they got a renewal presentation, not a, you know, just kind of a, not a renewal, but a, a look back at, you know, how, uh, performance is going in and looking at, uh, how in our self, self-insurance fund and, uh, the Wellmark, uh, claims, et cetera, how those claims are being utilized, uh, getting into a lot of data, one of the things in the, that I asked for, uh, to capture some information out of the healthcare trust board related to our self-insurance fund, was when Wellmark comes forward, every year they give, you know, what they anticipate to be ex, uh, estimated, expected claims, et cetera, and then they rate based on that, and so, let's just say the Wellmark will come back and say, we believe you should set your rates at, uh, you know, let's just say, a five percent increase, a ten percent increase, and then the healthcare trust board looks at all that information that they get, what they know internally, and then the board itself has a determination and has a discussion about what they think those rates should look like, so typically Wellmark will come in high, and then you try to figure out where you wanna go, and so what I asked for was a five-year history again on, uh, what did we adopt and what was our increase and what was the Wellmark recommended over five years, and then you can look at those expected claims Wellmark has, see how we performed, and all of those for me are just kind of key indicators when you start planning and saying, okay, Wellmark is recommending a five, a ten percent increase in rates, uh, we're only gonna take five, and how confident are we in that five percent that we're gonna keep the fund, uh, performing where it needs to be at to make sure it's not going red, and so, or that you're looking at it and saying, okay, over five years, they recommended, you know, the average is Wellmark was seven percent above what we recommended over the last five years is an average, uh, we came in and we did okay on what we set the rates at, but I don't know that without seeing that data, and so it's just one of those things, looking at, you know, how we're performing and getting back to it, because I do hear from the employees that if you, you know, if your provider is saying, you know, that, uh, you need to go ten percent, and for five years, you're going at that five percent, uh, and then in that sixth year, when you're doing your budget process, and then you're looking at that fund balance going, well, this year Wellmark is recommending a ten percent, but we're gonna have to go fifteen percent because we have underfunded the plan over the last five years, those are things I wanna look at, because I do hear, you know, obviously, uh, from the employees about the percentage of some of those benefit costs going up, so, anyway, the conversation, the presentation with Wellmark, as they went through the presentation, uh, and, uh, the discussion within the healthcare trust board, I thought was great, so I thought it was really good.
Thank you, Commissioner Drew, is there anything else to add?
Uh, yeah, getting back to, I mean, uh, the, the other thing, getting back to items from commission members, uh, you know, we all are obviously getting some feedback on the work week and the days that the county is open, uh, I had a couple people hit me up during the stock show, a couple at the VFW breakfast going, so you put something out, I read the article in the journal, so you put something out, and then you had some technical issues, and you pulled it off the journal website, your survey, et cetera, and then they began asking questions about, you know, what does this timeline look like? I know that we're all getting, uh, emails from all commissioners, and it's hitting each of us, and then independently from a few people, I'm getting some, it's not a lot, but it's enough, uh, and so I'm curious, uh, because I'm getting asked the question and I can't answer it, if we were to say that we were gonna have a discussion on this, and there is a behind-the-scenes process about departments going back and surveys, I think, within their staff, and, uh, there's some type of opportunity for a public survey, I think they have something at the treasurer's office that they're handing out to people that come, and so if we were to say, how long is this gonna take, uh, personally, I would like to know, uh, you know, are we talking two months, three months, four months, when do we anticipate that we as a board would like to see this back on the agenda?
Thank you, is that all you have, Mr. Dur?
Yep.
Commissioner Drew?
Okay, um, I missed the complete health center, uh, meeting, put it on my calendar for the wrong day, uh, Rapid City Public Library, attended that meeting, uh, it was, uh, discussed that they have about thirty-five thousand users of the public library, about five hundred out-of-county users, so they don't live in Pennington County, they live outside of the county, and so they increased the user's fee for another ten dollars, uh, which brings that up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars annually for a library card for those that live outside of Pennington County. Uh, yeah, I attended the Cracker Barrel, Jerry's covered that well, the, I also attended the reception for the school of mines president, uh, Dr. Brian Tandy, and that was, uh, that was a good reception, good welcome for him.
Awesome.
So, that's all I have.
Commissioner Drew, or, or Dur has a question, I think, or a comment?
So, I'm trying to, so it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars if you're a non-county resident?
Right.
Okay.
Wow, that's a lot of money for a library.
It was, it was at a hundred and fifteen, and they just increased it that additional ten dollars to a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, and I'm not real familiar with how they figured that number, but, so if they had a hundred and fif, if it costs a hundred and twenty-five dollars per person to run that library, you can get Amazon Prime and Audible for that much.
Okay, so now that's just the out-of-county ones.
Right.
So that's an out-of-county individual who wants to use the library, it's a hundred and, it's going to one thirty-five?
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
Okay, all right, I guess it's my turn, and I, I, I attended a lot of things, and I'm getting my arms around everything, and trying to get out and meet all the department heads and all their departments and, uh, and not try to disrupt their workflow, but, uh, um, the, the, talk about the, the survey, I, I, um, had nothing to do with that, I did pull it down, um, that's what happened, it, it was never supposed to happen, so, just to let you guys know that, I was more surprised or as surprised as anybody else, um, so we'll have that conversation, um, let me see here, well, we all got the, you know, tour of the, the buildings, which was fun, and got to see some of the infrastructure that's failing and how our approach is or not, I didn't make it to the Cracker Barrel, but we had great representation there, it sounds like, the stock show, I just, on my way here from, from the picture-taking, I, I buzzed up Ron because I was curious, because everybody was, there was a lot of excitement happening, and you could see all the people there, and I said, hey, what's happening? He said, they're, they're breaking records right now, and they're, they have actually less people bringing, um, to their auctions or their shows or whatever, but their, their dollar amounts are way higher, they're breaking records in that, in that field, so I'm hoping that, you know, with the, in clement weather, it seems to get a lot more people, the only thing that could stop it is if we got a lot of snow, but we all know what level that stock show means to our city and our community, and, and I can't tell Ron and his crew enough, all the volunteers and all the commission that puts their efforts into it, uh, if they didn't have volunteers, they would never, they would, this would never happen, he's got over three hundred people that are working for free because they just love this thing, and so I, I can't say enough about him, and I don't think anybody up here can, that being said, I'm, I'm done talking, and, uh, so, um, I guess we'll look for a motion to, we have several items to, um, cover, or not several, but a few items to cover in executive session for personnel matters, contractual matters, or proposed or pending litigation, personnel managers for update on the, on the fire administration, and a complaint resolution, so, uh, whoever makes the motion, just move the motion to go into executive session pursuant to STCL one twenty-five for personnel matters, and, um, whoever wants to make that motion.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session for STCL one twenty-five dash two dash one for personnel matters, and one twenty-five dash two dash three for proposed or pending litigation, and in this case, it's a review of, uh, correspondence with legal.
Okay, thank you, and hopefully she's still available, so, motion, do I have any comments on the motion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a second.
I'll second it.
The second, no, got a first with, uh, Dur and a second with Hadcock, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sign, hearing none, motion carries, we will move to executive session.
Okay.
Motion to come out of, uh, executive session?
I moved.
Motion by Hadcock?
Second.
Second by Roskinick to come out of executive session?
You can make motions, Ron.
All in favor?
All in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, seeing none, motion carries, we're out of executive session, and.
I would just make a comment that Gary Drews had to head off to Pier for business.
Correct, yep, Gary Drews had to head off to Pier, and, uh, so it's the four of us, so entertain the motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a motion to have the HR director enter into separation agreement with employee HH.
Thank you, we have a motion?
Second.
That is a motion by Dur, second by Hadcock, any comments on the motion? I'll see, none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries, so entertain a motion to.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Roskinick and a second by Hadcock to adjourn, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, folks.